All right. Good afternoon, everyone. It's four o'clock. Welcome to our February work session. We have a lot of material to cover tonight. And so we're going to go ahead and get started on time. We have cooperative strategies will also be with us tonight. They have a specific deadline when they need to get out. So we're going to stay on strict time timing tonight. First item of business is the appointments for the Special Education Advisory Committee. We had discussed the applications that the board received and had the opportunity to review. Is there a motion on the floor to approve the applications?
I make a motion to approve the SEAC applications.
Second.
Okay.
Jackson, can you please call the roll?
Ms. Bassin?
Aye.
Ms. Gampson?
Aye.
Mr. Clinton?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Dr. Gabriel?
Aye. Thank you. And I know that on our agenda, we have the Gifted Advisory Committee. Those applications are still in process, so we will be voting on them at a different time. Moving on to item 2.02, the Accountability Plan. I greatly appreciate the work that our subcommittee, Ms. Gampson, Ms. Bassin, and Dr. Boone and Administration have done on getting the information together, spent a lot of time reviewing what we have on board docs, and I'd like to turn it over to them.
Thank you. Do you all want to sit there together in the front, or are you comfortable?
That might be easier for us.
Yeah, okay.
Did you get your hot coffee? You got your hot coffee?
Yeah.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you. We're going to go right into it because we know we have a tight timeline. So what we did is Dr. Gabriel assigned the two of us to work together on coming up with the draft for the Accountability Plan. So once we had Dr. Boone authorize the release of a lot of data, and Dr. Bailey and Mr. Foody spent a hard, long, busy two weeks getting that ready for us. Ms. Bassin and I met with them ahead of time to make sure that we got everything we thought we really needed that they had, and then spent a lot of time over the holidays doing the needs assessment. Because when you're doing an Accountability Plan, you need to look at where you are. And so we did that first. And so then when I finished doing that, I went over and looked at what the U.S. Department of Education and the Virginia Department of Education was requiring, which indicators they were focusing on. And so that's where this comes from. So we're going to kind of work our way through the draft, and this is a draft. So if we'll go to the beginning, kind of laid it out as a new Accountability Plan, so you usually have those go three to five years out. And so this kind of just lays out what it is. This year, of course, is not the year of implementation. This was our planning year. And so if you look on, let's see. What happens to me with technology? I don't know why anyone gives it to me. Just push the button.
There it is. Yep.
I didn't get it in anybody's eye, did I? I guess I'll do it on this one. I can't do it on that one.
No, just do this one.
We got the paper, we're good.
Yeah.
Will it do it?
Yeah, I think you got it.
I don't see it. Well, whatever. Maybe you can figure it out. Technology. Anyway, what you see is the planning year, which is the year we're in now. And so basically, we begin working with the Accountability Plan, trying to pace out the board-level Accountability Plan. As you know, when we are planning, we look at where we are, and that's where we begin. And then we look at where we want to be and when we want to be there. And that's basically the job of the board. The job is to determine where we're going and when we want to get there. In between the where we are now and where we want to be is the how-to road that we travel down. And that's why we have a superintendent. Because the superintendent makes the decisions about how to get from where we are to where we want to be and how to get us there in the time that we want to be there. So that's basically what we're looking at here. And that's what the five-year plan does, as you see. It starts with the planning year, which is this year, and it simply says the Accountability Plan. Now, Ms. Bassin and I, I know she expressed concerns about the February 28th. I, we were a little late getting started with this this year. I was planning it out so that it's ready for implementation in the fall. And I wanted to be sure I got it to Dr. Boone in time, that she could get the district stuff done, and she would have three months to do that, so we could have it by June 30th and be ready to start training. But it may be a little soft there, depending on when the superintendent, and Ms. Bassin, you want to do that.
Yeah. Well, you know, as Ms. Gampson said, you know, this is a draft, and you know, my expectation was that this would be a process of getting to a draft that we all feel reflects our school board accountability. And there are things, and you know, as she mentioned, we spent a lot of time together kind of talking about our different perspectives, which we certainly come from different perspectives. But you know, one of the things that I want you to pay close attention here, which is nicely mapped out, however, thinking from a board accountability plan and process, do we want to dictate in our plan? And Dr. Boone, you know, I'd like your feedback, when exactly your end of the tasks oriented with this will be completed? And so that's kind of where, you know, we had differing opinions on.
I think it has to do with the amount of time. In other words, if you needed it by March 1st, or did you need another month in order to get it to us by June 30th? Because that's when we need it back.
So respectfully, I'm not sure what the "it" is that I'm trying to get back. I like clarity on what it is that you're asking of me as superintendent, and around the chart for the planning and initial training year. So if you could clarify that, I might have an idea of understanding what it is. Because if you'll recall, during the work session on January 9th, we presented to the board where we are already in a planning process. There was a page that we provided that it looks like the Accountability Plan has adopted that model.
Right, we did, because we wanted to be with you.
But we had. We had the specific action steps and strategies outlined here. So we've already been underway. And so I just need to know what the "it" is, what the ask is of us, because I don't know what you're asking me to provide.
Okay. So our expectation, well, at least, you know, is that this would be a collaborative process between, or a collaborative plan between the school board and the administration. But one of the things that we would like clarity on, and what the "it" is, is when do you need us to adopt this plan so that you can do more work? Do you, are there any obstacles to taking a little more time to make sure that we get this right? You know, my understanding is that this is on the calendar for adoption, February 20th.
No, there are no obstacles for doing more work with this, because respectfully, we've been underway with this work since I arrived December 1st of 15. And we've been very systematically reporting out what we've been doing, how we've been doing it, and the data associated with it. That was the essence of the mid-year retreat, was to say, you know, what are we focused on? And so we gave the examples of the deeper dive work that we're doing around chronic absenteeism as part of the work of what's with the new Accountability System and state Accountability System. And so we were clear that we're there. We have shared with the board back in the fall what the ESA targets are. And so, and in the high level of things that I perceive that the board had adopted were the basic goals, the mission and vision. So we're well on our way. One of the questions that I have when I reviewed the information is when we look at, on the, on that page, under the planning year 1819, and it says, so I would say that our work is already aligned.
And you know what? What you'll find, and you probably already have, is that what we did with this plan is we actually adopted your targets. So when you see the targets, we looked at the, and we went with this format, by the way, because we wanted to align with what Dr. Bailey and Mr. Foody told us that the district was already using. It was a little bit of a transition for both of us to change to this format, but we thought it was important for us to be using the same format that the superintendent had chosen. And it is a new format, and as I've used it, I've gotten used to it now. It took me maybe twice as long to do my work because it was a big adjustment, but I thought it was important for us to align ourselves with what the superintendent was doing, because she's the one that's doing the trenches' work. So, and so when we looked at the accreditation, we looked at the chart, and they had it marked out to be accredited within, you know, three years, starting in the fall from that point. And so as wherever there was a match, the new pieces is, I think it's priority two, that's a proposed one that's on here that there were no targets on, but most of the targets are aligned with what the superintendent already had. So I'm not surprised to hear her say that she's got all this work done, because certainly we know about the literacy plan that she already has in place, and she has a lot of things. So I think it's going to be a good fit, because we really made an effort to keep in mind the targets that she had already set. And so.
Well, and those targets were set in conjunction with the school board. And maybe not the current constitution of the board, but certainly they weren't done in isolation. They were based on data. So back to my question, I understand the districts aligned Accountability Work, which, again, the two are coming together very nicely, and we're already doing that. My question deals with the aligned school-level Accountability Plans, because this is a plan, not a system. And I'm not pushing back, but because I was here in 2001, when we developed a full Accountability System, there's a lot more that goes into it than this. You recall at the January 9th work session, we provided to the board what the school improvement plans were, with the idea of now having worked with VDOE such that we don't have to have multiple plans for the same outcomes. And they have allowed us to align plans across what they expect for our, what we expect for a district in terms of school improvement, what they expect in terms of state-level school improvement, and then how we begin to address the application for the grant. And so that alignment has happened. So when I say I'm not sure what goes, the district piece is fine. I don't think we're in a place where school-level principal and teacher planning is ready around it. We can certainly have discussions about, are there places where we reference the various targets in this work? But I don't think we have something that we're ready to train beyond what we're doing with the district leadership team on this.
Yeah, and let me give you a quick response to that. Dr. Bailey made us aware of the alignment with ESA for the school-level plans. And so when we have a line here, we talked about that, was simply that the alignment would match the goals of the board and the priorities. But that the format and everything, that you've already done all that work, we're not interfering with that at all. This would not do that. The alignment there was not for them to align this format, because Dr. Bailey was very clear when she talked about exactly what you just shared, and we agreed that absolutely we're not going to throw that work out, because that makes perfect sense, because it's so important for us to meet those ESA goals. So we can put your mind to rest with that, Dr. Boone, that Ms. Bassin and I, only when we having aligning, we're talking about aligning the big things, the goals and the priorities.
So then I would ask that then, as since this is a draft, as we go through, we will look at those last three bullets as it relates to what you just said.
Yeah, okay.
I marked that.
Yeah. All right, yes, yeah. We'll be working on that. I'll be, here it is, right here.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll clarify that, and thank you for bringing it up. All right, so as you see, and I'm just going to do, I know you've all had this, that's why we were rushing to get it to you earlier, so that you would have a chance, so I'm not going to sit here and read the plan to you, as we're just going to kind of go through it, Ms. Bassin and I, to take you through. We will stop at the priorities, because that's a proposed thing. But if this is okay, except for that, and you can see, as you see, year three, 2021, is the all schools fully accredited, accredited, that aligns with the goal that is already there on Dr. Boone's. And if we move down, and everything, the in-between years are just progress monitoring and PD, PD, professional development, that's how we live as educators. And when you get to year five, which is the last year of the plan, you know, is when we hit the others. We had a discussion about graduation rates, should it be sooner? But I just left it, when I calculated it out from the point with what the additions were that Mr. Foody had put on, I just went with that. The only thing here that is the goal one, priority two, which is the high-performing, that's something new that we have in here, and I'll address that when we get to it. All right, moving on. Which page are you, which page are you? Oh, okay. Page three. Okay. Okay, so if we move into.
That's a question.
Yes.
Are we doing this in sections, or are we going all through and then asking questions? What's the process that you want to? If I have some.
Why don't we let, why don't we get through the priorities?
Yeah, let's get through, that's the big thing.
And then we'll go through, and we can stop at that after we discuss the priorities.
All right, so I just want to give you a quick overview of what I, what we did together, and I did some of this on my own, is we looked, we took the, all the data that Dr. Bailey and her staff had gotten ready for us, and we took time to do our own needs analysis, and we came back together with a list of what we saw there, because as we say, that's where you start. The other thing that I did was I looked to see what the Virginia, there are all kinds of indicators we can look for when we're doing this, there's hundreds of indicators. So what indicators is the Virginia Department of Education prioritizing? And what indicators is the U.S. Department of Education prioritizing? Because the state tells us if we're accredited based on us meeting the indicators that they prioritize, and the U.S. Department of Education tells us, if we want to keep getting money, that's how, you know, education is a state function, the feds get in because they give us money. And if we want the money, we have to look at the indicators, they say. So if you look, and I wish I could get the thing pointing, but if you look at the beginning, well, the goals are already approved. But if you look at goal one, academic achievement outcomes, then if you go down to what the Department of Education requires, what indicators do they look at? Well, they look at accreditation, that's, they're not even treating that as an, as a indicator, that's their goal. And under that, the indicators they look at are the SOL benchmarks, and they use the new growth model, the new growth calculation for that, the achievement gaps, and we found four achievement gaps that were the priority for Norfolk, they're the ones with the largest gaps, which are African-American, black-white gap, special needs, regular ed gap, low socio-
Economically disadvantaged.
Thank you. That gap, and then the ELL gap. And interestingly enough, the ones that popped up on our needs assessment are the same ones that ESA's looking at. So anyway, those, and then on-time graduation, and then chronic absenteeism. That's what Virginia looks at. So what do the feds look at? They look at accreditation. They look at reading and math, SOL pass rates. They look at achievement gaps, using pass rates, not the growth model, but the pass rates. They look at graduation, and they look at absenteeism. The exact same ones. Both the Virginia Department of Education and the U.S. Department of Education are telling us, these are the important indicators. This is where you need to have your eye. And they know, because they say, if we see these, this is how we determine whether you're delivering a high-quality education to your students. This is determining what kind of performance your school and your district's doing. And so then I was looking, well, what else? Will we send out report cards, or school quality profiles, or whatever we're currently calling them? And we're told by the state what to do when we send those to parents, and the first thing we have are the reading and literacy and the math scores, and followed by the achievement gaps, the subgroup data, and the accreditation ratings. And then a lot of other indicators, all of which Norfolk looks at. So if you go to the next page, I summarized what are the five indicators that the U.S. Department of Ed and the Virginia Department of Ed are telling us to focus on, and they, here they are. These are the five. So I started with the needs assessment and that when we went to work on the priorities. So if we go to the next page, you'll see the approved goals, the board approved these goals last time, in fact, recognizing that they were approved, because we were looking at improved student academic achievement and outcomes, and we're like, that should be increased. We like increase is the verb there, but then we realized, that doesn't matter, because the board already approved those goals. So we left it, and we went down. So if you see below that, you see the current priorities that the board has. And when we go down to the proposed priorities, what you're going to see is, it's pretty much the same, just with a slightly different focus. So if you look at goal one, full accreditation, proposed, increase the percentage of schools earning full accreditation by 2022, which was the target we already have, exactly the same. Goal two, achieve academic achievement of all students while closing gaps. What I proposed, and that's why it's here, was because both academic achievement, which they measure with SOL scores, and achievement gaps were two of the two big priorities that both the state and the feds are telling us we need to focus on. And gaps, in my opinion, is our weakest area. I mean, our black-white gaps are in the 20s, our special needs gaps, some of them are reaching up into the 30% gaps. And so I wanted it pulled out and separated. I wanted those two split, so that we are sure that we're focusing on those gaps, that we're saying it's a priority all by itself, it's so important. And that was the discussion we had. Then, so that's, that would be priority two and the current priorities splits into three and four in the proposed. And the other change here was I added one, and this is my adding, and this is something the board will have to decide. I think that we should go and rate our schools as top-performing, high-performing, accredited, and then not meeting benchmarks in reading or math, in the fifth category, not meeting, reaching, bleh, not reaching benchmarks in both reading and math. So that we can, you know, our parents are looking for information, and they're checking it, and this is my proposal, and this is a totally new one. I'm going to come back to it in a second, so I can take us to the rest of the way, because, you know, we're coming, we all, we have a very, a board with a very diverse skills and background coming into this, which is a strength for us, and we're all looking at things through a different lens. And that's why Ms. Bassin and I tried to turn our lenses into a pair of binoculars, so that we were, and so I think she may want to speak to this a little, or are you, is that okay?
Well, I'll let you get through it, and then we'll.
Okay, okay. All right, so then if we go down to priority five, which was priority seven, so this is just moving it down with the focus on attracting highly qualified staff. I put in yellow, how do we measure that? Because anything that's a priority, we need to be able to measure. And so that's, should we measure if we're fully staffed in September, or if we have a decrease in the need for long-term subs? And that's something we can work out. I normally wouldn't have put this in an Accountability Plan, I've written a ton of them, but because it's not a student thing, but because it's a concern, even though we're doing a lot better in the district, we decided it needed to stay in. And we were trying to be as close to the priorities as possible. All right, six and seven, which go under goal two, there's the educational planning, which we had, which was goal six in the old, not the old, in the current priorities, six and six, just written out a little bit. There was a little discussion over whether we should use the word declining, and I added, it's basically the same wording, I tried to compact it a little bit, where it says, improvement plan for facilities and technology. I added school enrollment, because I know that's one of the drivers of the proposed Lake Taylor changes. There was a discussion about whether we needed to have declining in there. That all we need really to have, I think, was, I think Dr. Bailey and Mr. Foody said we just need to have school enrollment. So that's why it's in yellow, so we can discuss that. It was good to present to them, because they were able to take and look at it with another eye and from a different viewpoint, too. All right, and number seven, priority seven, and the proposed matches, oh, the climate one, goes back to priority three, just some rewording, tightening it up some, and focusing. This is where we get attendance rates in. Remember, that was one of the five priorities, even though it wasn't an instructional one. So that's what seven is, the safety, the attendance. And then, and then under goal three, we had no, we have no priorities on the previous, oh, on the, I'm sorry, it's not previous. On the current priorities, there was no priority under goal three. So we put one in, attract and retain community partnerships, and strengthen family engagements to go, because a goal needs a priority. And then the last one, this is the one that I had removed, but Ms. Bassin, and I know Mr. Jordan were very supportive of having this one in, and I asked Ms. Bassin, and she kindly sent me what all the criteria was, and there's a place for it in the plan, as you get to the back. It doesn't fit under one of the goals, but I listened to her point of view. And so that's why that's still in, and that matches wherever it was before. So it was priority four, it's priority nine now, but I understand what she's saying, and I think that it's perfectly logical to have it here. Okay, so what we were hoping at this time, and I think Mr. Jordan probably has some things he wanted to add, and first I'm going to let Ms. Bassin, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
Ms. Bassin is going to give you a little bit from her lens.
Okay. Okay, so thanks, Lauren. So, you know, she just went over the proposed priorities. Before we do that, so one of the things I want to remind you all, when we talked about it on January 9th, when we talked about increasing academic achievement, priority number two of the current plan, it wasn't SOL-centric, it was, what are some other academic indicators that we as a board are interested in monitoring? And so I just, I want to make that clear, as you think about the proposed priorities, which, and we've, yes, we're held accountable based on our SOL results, but we want to go beyond that. We want to look at other academic indicators. And so we're, we would, we kind of talked about, how do we incorporate that here to be reflective of our goal of looking beyond SOLs? And we know that our families and our parents want us to go beyond, you know, that our students are just, as I heard last night at a GEAC meeting, you know, test-taking robots, because that's, and Dr. Boone has said for the last three years, we're focused on teaching and learning, and not teaching to the test. So how do our priorities reflect that vision? And right now for me, you know, I'm trying to figure out where to incorporate that, and look forward to your feedback. So just keep that, keep that in mind. And then for the proposed priority two, you know, along those same lines, the high-performing schools, top-performing schools, having those designations. The state had these, a variety of designations just, you know, two years ago, you know, the partially accredited, the fully accredited, you know, they had like five different ways of becoming accredited to denied, right? And they did away with that. And so while we're appreciating growth now, I feel like we're going back in time and taking away the progress that our schools and students may be making in terms of growth. And so our, unless we have a clear definition of what high-performing, top-performing really looks like, and whether it takes into account those measures, and whether the administration, along with the board, feel like that is really going to get us to a point of where we want to go, I would just bring some caution to that. And so, you know, and we've talked, and while I understand Ms. Gampson's point of view, and you can elaborate as well, but I just wanted to put that on there. And then for priority six, you know, the point about including why we may be focused or expanding our efforts on educational planning, this is the only area where we say why. And we had some discussion about using the word declining, because, you know, there's a variety of reasons why we have declining enrollment, but that's not the only reason that we're engaging in educational planning. You know, we're engaging in educational planning because we want socio-economically diverse schools. We want not just enrollment. We may want to change, you know, maybe go to theme programs in the future. We don't know right now what may come down the road. So we may be limiting ourselves by putting the why exactly now. Yes, it's enrollment for our discussion on Lake Taylor, but it may be something different, you know, for instance, for South Side STEM Academy. So I caution us with putting the why in here, whereas it will be in the, in our progress monitoring, it will be in the plan in another place. Does that, does that make sense? I see you look like you have a question.
I do, but I just, I want you to finish down there.
Okay.
But I'll come back to this one.
Okay.
Because I think that it has another connection.
Okay. So I just, those are just some thoughts that I want you to think about as you think about these priorities. I'll let Ms. Gampson elaborate more on, I think, her thoughts on some of these before we open it up.
All right, and I'll just be really clear now. All right, and I'll just be really clear now. The difference between one and two is one is, one encompasses a lot of what, of what you're saying. It's, we, we're not doing pass rates for SOL, we're doing the growth model, which looks at growth. So putting that in two eliminates, I mean, it eliminates the difference, I think. And we did this, when we turned this district around before, goodness knows, they, I think they were schools of excellence or something, I can't remember, because we collected the awards for them. But I feel that it's perfectly, it's, it's a goal to shoot for. And when you get in here, I'm sure if you've gone through and looked, you see that it is defined what it is, and it is based on pass rates and the scores. And I think that it's perfectly legitimate, because we've done the other things now with the new, much-improved accreditation model that does definitely take. But once you get accredited, once 2022 passes and we're all accredited, what are we shooting for then? This is what we start to shoot for. So that's just my response to that. I'm okay with taking declining out. I put it, we put it here because we decided to let the board make the decision on it. And I don't think we talked about, somehow I must have missed one. I went down to the parties, I missed three. Oh, I, I guess I got sidetracked with, yeah, we did, that was the separation. So I think that's pretty much it. We're pretty much together on this. We spent a lot of time talking through it to try and, and come to a compromise on some of the items. So I think now, whatever, and I think Ms.
Just, just for the sake of clarity, these are the priorities that you are proposing to us that you would like for us to adopt.
I'd like those adopted tonight, because we can't really, it changes a lot in here if we don't have the priority set.
So that's our ask, that's the ask.
Yeah. Well, and I think some people had some comments they wanted to make.
Yeah. So the declining piece down there, and that, when I was listening to you speak about that one, I just kind of had the thought about the connection. So as we decline in student enrollment, so do the resources, becomes more scarce and to be able to do what we need to do. But the other piece of that, too, is the marketing and branding piece of the district. And I don't, you know, not saying that we get into the weeds of how that's done, but that's also a piece that's important, how we communicate that North Public Schools has great programs. And I think that we've had some discussion around that, that we don't, that we could do a better job and really highlighting some of the great programs and things that we have. And that, that might be something that kind of tackles this declining piece. Because when you look at, and I know Mr. Jordan had shared something, when we kind of look over the years, if you look from 2012 to where we are now, every year almost, except for one year, we've had a consistent decline. And that's not necessarily, and it could be a multitude of things. I mean, we are in a very transient area, high military population, I think maybe about three years ago.
Birth rates.
Low birth rates, you know, so there's a lot of different things in there. But keeping an eye on that should be important, particularly as we're.
I agree. I, I'm not saying that we don't, but that is just one of the many whys we would be engaging in ed planning.
So your, your major point was that this was the only place where we put a why?
Yes, right, right. And that is addressed in.
But we do address it somewhere else?
Right.
Got it, okay.
And I know Mr. Jordan had a next one, but I, I think I can help us with number six.
Okay.
Just take out declining enrollment. And again, you're just planning for facilities, technology, and enrollment needs. You just take out declining, because while currently.
That's what we were leaning toward already.
While currently, the projection is to decline a few more years and stabilize.
Yes.
Birth rates could increase, a ship could become homeported here, and there could be things that increase. So I think that way you leave it flexible, and you're just addressing enrollment, and.
You want to take the word school out also, Dr. Boone has said, okay, with everyone, or?
No, I would just say, a school enrollment is.
Good, okay, so just, all right, well, we're fine with that. We just put it in yellow because we wanted to get the board.
Right, but I was just, so that we don't have to spend a lot of time on number six, I think. Just taking out declining addresses that.
Done.
All right, okay.
Done.
Okay.
I like the comment.
Mr. Jordan.
So, bear with me, because I'm struggling just a little bit, because we are having a conversation around making amendments to something that I don't think is at our foundation correct. And I don't think it's what we asked the committee to do coming out of the January meeting, which I went back to watch. So just from a process standpoint, typically if, you know, we shouldn't be at a work session and the superintendent being asked her input on this document at this point. Ideally, you all have a committee, committee works. We say, please don't come back with two reports. You all come back as a committee, you've had an opportunity for administration review. So when we get here, we will at least have some sense of where we're going together. The title of the document, at least proposed, is Five-Year School Improvement Accountability Plan. We started down a path of a school board accountability plan. There's a five-year strategic plan that if the board decides to adopt the most three-to-five-year strategic plan that boards should go through or typically will go through. And as we went through our work previously, the school board priorities and goals evolved from the discussion around the five-year strategic plan. We then took those priorities and goals, and then used the school board's accountability plan to support the school board's work around achieving those goals. We did not develop priorities and goals based upon a proposed five-year school improvement accountability plan, because the strategic plan is much, much larger. So I just think process-wise, trying to push through priorities and goals that become the boards, that becomes the districts, that becomes the communities at this level, I don't think is, is a good process. Beyond that, in the, just going back to the first page or the cover page, I have great concerns around the concept of the district accountability plan, the school-level accountability's plan, the principal accountability planning and implementation, the teacher planning, strategic implementation PD. I think all of those are way too low, below the line in terms of the board's responsibility. And we need to get some clarity, whether or not we are working on the school board's accountability plan, or whether or not we're working on a division comprehensive accountability system. They are not the same, in my view. And so once you start off with the premise or the foundation that we're working on a five-year school improvement accountability plan, then to me, everything that follows ties to that, which then muddies the whole water. So, you know, I appreciate the work that's been done. I think the committee's report is premature. I think the committee needs to go back and come with a cons, together consensus recommendation that's had the opportunity for the administration review. And I think if we continue down the path of going through this, line by line, as we are currently doing, I don't think we're going to achieve what we aspire. And I also think that we're outside of what we discussed at the last meeting. Even to the point where we say here that the revised school board academic goals were approved at the January 2019 work session. When I went back and looked at it, I know we had some discussion, but we didn't vote. I don't think we approved, I think we had some general consensus around some guidance. But I think it's incorrect to list it as approved at January 2019 work session. So I think we've made some good steps forward, and I applaud the work that's been done. But I, I feel as a board, we have to get some consensus and clarity around what are we doing and what are we trying to achieve? And then go from there. Because I'm, you know, since you're all, I'm more confused today than I was after the last work session, because I don't know if we're doing a school board accountability plan, are we doing a five-year school improvement accountability plan? Or are we laying the foundation for a comprehensive accountability system? And I'd just like to get some clarity on what is it that this governance team is doing, so I can provide whatever input is, is appropriate.
Sure. First and foremost, I want to say thank you to our colleagues who spent time on working on this. Being the individual who actually made the motion to refer to committee, the focus was to come back with priorities and for you to use your collective experience and to come back here to the board so that we could move forward. I don't necessarily agree with everything that my colleagues said down here. And I'll, and I'll just premise it in the respect that when we talk about the administration and the work that you've done, you've worked with Dr. Bailey, who was designated, who is our.
Each help.
To review this and to make sure that this information was in alignment. I'll be perfectly honest, I did not like the accountability plan. I thought it was very confusing, the original one. And I also made it in, in this very room, stated that we had too many different plans that were not aligning, that there were things all over the place. I like this in the respect that it brings it, it makes it succinct, it brings it together, and it gives a direction. We have to give the superintendent and the administration clear choice and direction as to where we want to be, and also to communicate to the city hall, communicate to our constituents, that this is what we're trying to do for North Public Schools. We have to be real about it. There are some serious challenges that we have. And we're thinking we're taking the time out, and, and we have made these conversations. But when we use the term muddy the water, I look at spinning the wheels in the respect of, you know, we're talking about process. Pick up a phone, talk about process, share those experiences. But we've got to move forward. And I appreciate the work that you all are doing. And when I look at this here, and when we're talking about an accountability plan, now I know that you guys have identified, you know, we talk about the school-level accountability plan. We're not going to create that. That's the superintendent, administration, principal accountability plan. We're not creating that as a board. We're identifying that those things need to be in place, but that's the administration. And even down to the teacher level, all of those things have to align. But those things can't align if we, as the board, don't give them guidance. If we don't set the vision, we don't set the goals. And we got to make sure that we're working with our superintendent to do that. And from my understanding, she designated a member of the administration to do that. And so I appreciate the work and that we're here. I would really urge us to keep focused on the priorities, on our goals. And I, I know, I know you said approved. I don't think we approved, I think we had some general consensus around where we were going to go, because we haven't approved this plan. This is still a working document. And I think that we were coming here today to have conversation around that as a board. But I, I really, I take issue in the respect of what I consider sometimes process, process, process. You know, we've got to move forward. And I don't want it to seem like this, that this board isn't taking decisions and this board isn't taking action on certain things. We identified, and we've been talking about this for now seven months, and we're now at a place, and I appreciate the work, and I, and I appreciate you all working together, coming with differences of opinion, and coming with something. But we got to have something to work from. And so I appreciate that it's here, and that we take, that we take some action. It's not going to happen today, but I know we've worked on agenda planning and identifying, making it very clear that we're trying to move progress and to work along with our superintendent.
So if I may, since I think your response was in response to mine, can you just answer a couple of questions for me? What is it that we are working on? Is it a school board accountability plan? Is it a five-year school improvement accountability plan? Now, I'm asking Mr. Clanton, he just, he spoke.
Oh, you can ask me, I'll respond back to it, I mean.
But we're the ones who worked on it, we can certainly respond to that.
Right, so I'm gonna let Ms., I'm gonna let Ms. Campson answer it first, and then.
The reason we're doing a school board accountability plan is back in the summer, the superintendent said that accountability plans are what she prefers. And that was why, moving away from Dr. King's, because, I mean, that was my understanding when we were sitting in the room and when I was asking for a copy of a strategic plan. And, and the, and the superintendent said that the school board plan in one of our meetings, maybe November, was the overarching thing. That they were, I'm sure she was using our priorities and our goals, as, as we would expect her to. And so, and, and she asked for clear direction. Tell me what you want me to do. And so that was why we started working.
Not do.
It's nice to know what we want you.
Tell me what you want to achieve, not do.
Well, okay, that's a better word, thank you.
Because if we're a governance team, we're, we're on a journey together.
Right.
And it's what are we trying to achieve together?
Right, thank you, thank you for that clarification. And, and so that was why Dr. Gabriel asked us to do this. And so this is a five-year accountability plan that gets readjusted every July based on the new student assessment data and all of the many, many, many other indicators that this plan asks us to collect, to collect. And then we sit down and we go through it, and then we adjust it every year. We don't keep the same exact document. It'll be adjusted based on each year's needs assessment. And it gives us a roadmap. Done a lot of accountability planning, Mr. Jordan.
I'm not.
I was trained by nationals, national consultants as we went through all of the turnaround of our last schools. And I was trained and coached in how to write accountability plans. And I wrote a lot of them, along with a great teaching staff and leadership team. And those accountability plans took a very, very low-performing, unaccredited, needs-improvement school, needs improvement being the label that was used before they started slapping accreditation denied on schools. And we took those accountability plans, and we took our school to being recognized as a national blue-ribbon school with the accountability plans that we wrote. And five times recognized as a Virginia distinguished Title I school. So I've been trained in it, I've practiced it, written them, and I've written plans that got results. And that's what was in my mind as I worked with Ms. Bassin, who brought a good, different point of view to broaden my own experience. And that's what we have here. And we need to move forward. It is February, the year is half over. We need to be planning now what we want to start doing for the fall. You can't wait around until the summer to do that, because all the staff, all the professional development and everything is tied to it.
So I, I respect your experience and your, and your work and your training. And if the school board was having a committee discussion around getting the board involved with writing accountability plans for schools, that, to me, would be very different. I still don't have an answer to my question. Are we doing a school board accountability plan? Or is this, as is proposed, a five-year school improvement accountability plan? Or as you just described, is this a plan for how we're going to make each and every school what you described your success was with the schools that you led? I'm just asking, I'm asking, because I just want to get clarity at the level.
Obviously, it's not a school accountability plan, Mr. Jordan.
Okay.
But the process, the process of writing an accountability plan is the same, whichever level you do it. The emphasis is what changes. And this was written to be at a board level, that's why it does not talk about the how-to part of a plan. There's no strategies in here that usurp what the job that the superintendent has. This is to give us goals and targets to give her. The five-year improvement is a piece of this accountability plan. This is what the title says here.
Right, so in the.
Upside down. So that's what this is, that's what this is. The other parts, every other page is a component of this, if that answers your question.
I'll come back. And we get a chance to go forward. If you all could clarify, in this proposed draft, what actions you would have the board to take to achieve the goals that you've described? That's what I'm looking for.
If you go through it, it does have actions. There were the actions in each section, each priority. It's organized around goals, and under the goals are the priorities that are linked to those goals. And at the end of each of those priority sections, it has a place for board actions. Not complete, and we knew that when we did it, because we were expecting the board and the superintendent and her staff to give us more actions that we could do at the board level that would be appropriate to moving this process forward.
Just two areas I want to, to touch on. One is, I, while I hear that the targets that the district leadership team in conjunction with our have worked on, and what some of the federal requirements are, are reflected here, I am not hearing acknowledgement of how we've been doing the work to this point. Not necessarily a part of the plan, I get that. But the commentary keeps being what needs to be done, as though we have been standing here with our feet in the sand, waiting to something. You know, I go back to the January mid-year retreat, and just what we were trying to talk about and what we've done in the fall around having the content specialists in English and math present. Just for context, that's all I'm saying. The second issue for me deals with the high-performing schools piece, and it's not pushback on celebration, I think we ought to celebrate. But I do worry, and, and Mr. Clanton, you kind of touched on, on a little bit in terms of the branding and the marketing, and how we tell our story. We need to be truthful, transparent, and be honest about what our opportunities are and what our challenges are. However, one of the things I heard very clearly from principals. However, one of the things I heard very clearly from principals and teachers when I arrived was that they hoped I would not continue what was going on in scope, which became more of the walk of shame for schools. And schools that were successful were the only ones that were ever talked about. And the other things weren't happening. So I spent some time in conversation with principals, in conversations with teachers, to understand better for that. I think when we get to the point, high-performing schools, makes sense. The state does have a commendation process in place. And we have several schools that have been, received commended school status over the last several years. They tweaked that a little bit with the new accreditation system, but we still have schools that have met that. So I'm not opposed to celebrating schools that are doing well. I am concerned that when the model of celebrating, the model of addressing schools seems to be a deficit model, those not making progress as a piece almost becomes that shaming process rather than how do we celebrate what's going on? So that's just about language and context. I'm all for celebrating schools. But I do, I am challenged by what tends to go, once you go beyond, below those schools that are not being celebrated, then it's almost that walk of shame. And how, and that kills morale of schools. It doesn't mean that we're excusing it, but how do we, to that point, tell the story of what's going well in a school and we aren't being our own worst enemy in terms of attracting people to our school? So just a way to think about the language and how we address the high performance.
Dr. Boone, I appreciate your comments. And to Mr. Jordan's point earlier, when we began the discussion this afternoon, I began with that, that is this, to ask you all, is this plan that we're reviewing with you at the board level? There are things, and, you know, as we've said many times, that we're coming with different perspectives. Of course, I've worked on this at the board level in my time on the school board, so I have a different perspective. I feel that there are areas where we've gone deep, and I would like more time to be able to work on this. But you will see throughout the plan that we have tried hard to keep our actions at the board level. I think in our discussions in committee, we've, she knows that I'm not quite there yet with the flow. I don't think the focus, right now, the focus is on the tables, not so much on what the identified needs are and what our board actions and strategies are. So, and as I share with Ms. Campson, if I were ready, I wouldn't be, I'm not ready to adopt this, because this, to me, has a lot more work to do. So I appreciate the perspectives Mr. Clanton has provided, as well as Mr. Jordan. And, you know, certainly, yes, we've had a district leadership team working with us. But this is the board accountability plan, the targets, and where we're going, you know, of course, require the support of the district leadership team and Dr. Boone. And that's why, you know, I think that's what we hope to achieve out of this discussion today, is are we on the right path? Because we want to be able to continue to work on it so that the flow, you know, that the focus is truly at the board level. So, you know, we're hearing different things, and I think we have different expectations from our board colleagues. But I just wanted to reiterate that I, too, am not at the point where I feel like we are, that in its entirety, we're at the board level. There's, we certainly have made great progress in getting there, but we're not there yet. Which is why we did ask Dr. Boone, does she need, because, you know, I've been hearing that as well, that she cannot move forward without this. And so, you know, and I think that's just a differing of opinion. I respect and understand the perspective that you're coming from. But I don't feel that, and she's affirmed that she needs this right now. I think we could continue the work on it, taking the feedback. If you, we have not, at least, I don't know if Ms. Campson has...
Let me get to Ms. Smith, though. She had a question, and we are on a strict time right here, so.
I have a comment.
Sure.
Thank you, guys. This was definitely a lot of work that you put into here. I have concerns with the hard numbers that are in here in terms of where we want to be by a certain period of time. If you look at this on average, if I have it right, we're looking at gradual increases of about 15% to 20% a year in these different categories. I don't know if that's realistic or not. As opposed to having these hard numbers here, I'd much rather see us do some type of gradual increase, because we do have schools with lots of challenges. And some will progress much better than others, well, at a higher rate, I'll say it that way, than others. They're not going to all go at, improve at the same rate. And I believe that whatever rate we have, it should be a realistic and reasonably attainable rate on an annual basis getting to the target. And I don't, I just don't think we should have a hard number just yet. And it also leaves the room to celebrate successes. Normally, you see something, not in here, but just margin of error, somewhere between 3% and 5%. So if they're improving at a rate of maybe somewhere up to 5%, then maybe we will have more schools attaining the goal, meaning as you're attaining one, you celebrate it, then you move to the next one. But if we have something like 20%, and I'm nowhere near 20%, what kind of incentive now do I have to continue when I have so many challenges?
Just a quick response. Most of the targets on here were Dr. Boone's already, they're already in place. The ones that aren't, or the priority that we're talking, that we were having a discussion about, which is the high-performing labels, that was not hers. But the graduation rates, the accreditation goal of 2022, her charts worked that out already. She didn't change any of hers.
I still stand in my position.
If maybe we can have Dr. Bailey address how the district has historically used those hard percentages in the plans.
One minute, sorry, but we do have time. Go ahead.
I think that some of the rates may have changed. Correct me if I'm wrong. If we want to achieve something by a certain time period, then you have to change the increments in between differently. I think our previous document talked about increasing two or three percentage points in some areas. But I think that, I didn't get a chance to look at it, all of the documents, I mean, all of the measures here. But I know, like, the accreditation one, you know, that was pretty aggressive.
That was the one we were given. We didn't change that.
Didn't change that one. So did we change any to reach 100% or anything by 2024? Okay.
And so usually, what we do is we look at prior performance and to kind of gauge that, and then we adjust each year.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay, I guess it's similar, in a way, similar to what Christine had said. But so, and also, I guess this ties back into what Mr. Jordan was saying. I do understand the difference between, you know, policy-driven, what we're doing, we're giving our direction, we're policy, and then Dr. Boone's in charge of implementing. But here's where my concern lies, is I've been thinking a lot about the special education students, the students with disabilities in the subcategory, and how as a nation, as a district, as a state, you know, everyone's performing pretty, not as well as I think we should be for these students. And so my concern is when we're looking at these goals at the board level. And in a lot of the discussions I've had in being on the Special Education Advisory Council, listening to what their recommendations are there, my concern is that there's something, seems to be something broken in the program. So until I know what that is, it's really hard for me to say that by a certain date, I'm going to achieve, you know, 80%, all special education students are going to achieve 80% on their SOL scores. And so I guess what I would really like to see, I really like to see a program evaluation on special education or on English-language learners, you know, and we can take it one subcategory at a time to really figure out, you know, maybe we do adopt these goals, and then we can change them once we know more. What are we not doing, or what's going well, and how can we improve, you know, either way, before, you know, as, once we adopt this? I mean, I do, I wholeheartedly want to reach, you know, 100% of our, these categories, reaching 80% pass rate, or whatever that was. But anyway, so that's something that's been, I've been mulling over on how to do that.
In a quick response, I couldn't agree with you more. And that's why in the January meeting, one of the things we shared with you in the school improvement plans, where special ed now is part of that content conversation, that the challenge around special ed has been teachers who are trained to provide modifications and accommodations versus teachers who are trained to teach the content. And so we've been very focused and very specific in making sure that our teachers, our special education teachers are at the table now with the content work. And so you've hit exactly on that. And if you remember, or have a chance to go back and look, those school improvement plans, we put in issues around monitoring, around specific professional development, again, bringing them to build the capacity of the content support versus the other. When we've looked at our schools within the district, and even when you look nationally, but when we presented Voices from the Field back in August, and we talked about schools that had had very significant growth of students with disabilities, a couple of things happened. School-wide ownership of student learning regardless of the label, so where the student with disability gifted English-language learner. The second thing is making sure that the teachers are part of the content focus and the work, and it's not every grade level, every department, especially as stands alone. And so that's where we are also learning from best practices internally of those schools that have made progress and how we support other schools in this work. So I, long way to say, I agree with you, but I also wanted to reference some framework work that we're doing around that to talk about. Because even when you talk about the compliance reviews from the federal level for special education, they still are pretty much on compliance. You know, what are your timelines and everything else? They haven't really figured out how to address in any substantive way the lack of academic achievement. And that's why we've gone out, you know, everybody's walking resume today, so I'll share mine. I am a former sped director, and so my background is in how do we improve the outcomes of students with disabilities. And so we know access to the core curriculum is the first thing that must happen in order for that success to occur. And then what's the system of supports that we build around those students, particularly the role of the special education teacher? And not having collaborative or co-teaching classrooms where the general ed teacher is always the leader and the collaborative teacher functions more like a teacher assistant. Those are all of the systems that we're trying to address to make sure that they're in there as true partners in that work and things that we have to do as a district, so.
I'm going to let Lauren share her thoughts, then we're going to wrap it up.
I'm going to just do this really quick, and I certainly don't want to have Ms. Bassin do it. What I, we need steps forward.
Yeah.
And because we're not going to get through this. So I'd like to say one thing to the board members. As you go through this proposed, this draft, if something's in blue, if we've highlighted it in blue, it means that that's another indicator that we wanted to look at or that we didn't currently have a chart for. We did not ask Dr. Bailey to make any charts for these, because now that data is historical from 2018. We've already done the needs assessment based on the 2018 data we had. So we will be revisiting this when it repopulates over the summer with the 2019 data. So we did not see any point in having her take the time to make new charts at this point. Anything that's in yellow were things that we wanted to have more input from the board from. It might be something that we weren't seeing exactly the same, and we wanted to broaden the input from it. The concern I have right now as we leave is that we did not approve the priorities. If really quickly, we could see, I'm looking at the priorities, I don't think anyone has a problem with number one. That's probably where Ms. Smith saw the big gaps, but we were following the line that we received already from the superintendent. So it looks to me like priority one is okay. You can correct me if not. Priority two is the priority that is under discussion, so I'm going to put a little circle around that. Three, the achievement gaps. I don't think anyone has a problem with doing achievement gaps, on-time graduation. Leaving the, we don't have the measure for the highly qualified staff, but I don't see that anyone's had any problem with that. Yell out if I'm missing, if I'm misquoting you. Priority six, we took the word declining out, and that seemed to make everyone okay with that. Priority seven, nothing came up, it seemed like a problem here. Are we okay? Eight, the community partnerships, which was a new priority we wrote to go under three, no one seemed to have a problem with that. Are we okay? And then the Board of Distinction, I would ask members of the board to go to the back of this and read the requirements for that, because once it comes here, you are accountable for that. It's a two-year process that would start in the fall, and we would be each accountable for completing that process in two years. I've already agreed with Ms. Bassin with the split of gaps out of and made into its own priority, that I support her on that. And I just want to clear, but certainly it's up to the board to decide. You need to read those and see how you feel about it, because that was something that the previous board did. I don't, at this point, I'm fine having it in here. So it looks to me like, and please, anyone on the board yell out, that we're okay except for priority two.
Yeah.
And so we would continue, okay? So then we will continue working on the other ones, and we'll just kind of move that to the side. That's the nice thing about having each priority in its own section. We'll move that to the side and continue working, but we'd like to come back.
I'm going to speak to that. But, real quick, real quick, Ms. Bassin. I'm sorry, but we have...
I understand, I understand.
Yeah, we've got to get out of here.
But I do want, I mean, we're not going to, we're not going to work on priority two. I mean...
That's what I said, we're going to, I'm pulling it out for the moment.
Do we have direction now? I mean, can we have direction now, whether to, I mean, my, to remove it? Can we remove it, or?
This is, these are my thoughts. I've yielded to everyone else to give their feedback, and we need to have direction. We need to have direction for our board. The community needs to hear direction from us. Dr. Boone needs to have this. We know that there are items that she and the division are already working on right now that are in alignment with what this is. This just makes it perfectly clear. As far as priority two goes, I'll just speak to that. I think we should strive to have high-performing schools. We don't have to label them, though. But I think we should always strive for that.
At this point, I'm saying...
Striving for it is a different, yeah.
Yeah, and so, and we have that. We have that by 2024, we are going to be a high-performing school division.
Well, what I would say is, I would be willing to remove two to get the rest of the priorities approved.
I don't think we have to.
We don't have to.
Okay, okay.
We don't have to, to do that.
Just for our, I think we want it, just for our continued work on this.
Because we need to know where we're going.
We don't want to spend a lot of time on it.
And I would like to ask the other board members, just let us know. I mean, Ms. Martin called me with her concern, and I said, please bring it up, because I agree, I think we should do a program evaluation for special needs.
Okay, so hold on a second.
Okay.
My suggestion, my suggestion is we do strive to have high-performing schools. Why? Because we know that every student, we believe that every student can be in a school that is high-performing. So we should strive for that.
I think it's the definition, I think it's the definition.
That's why we're here.
Yeah.
You know.
So that would be my thought. So it sounds like there is consensus amongst us that we will go forward with the priorities as they are, as we have discussed, the modifications, with the exception of removing the labels under priority two.
The priority two needs to be rewritten.
Or removed. Yeah, just come back in with another revision of priority two.
So just for clarity, these are the board's priorities?
Yes.
Overall?
Yes.
Okay.
In alignment with the goals, with the priorities based on the needs assessment.
I, I, I...
I agree.
All right, so we're leaving the percentages in here. We're going to rewrite that one for the board, along with, we'll rewrite it. We don't want percentages, no percentages. We'll rewrite that one and see where the board fills. And then priority nine, please read and see if you're committed to that account, to be accountable for what's in priority nine. It's in here.
Really recommend it.
And if I may suggest, perhaps the priority is what we want.
Right.
When you get into the body of the paper, it's where you begin to see the numbers associated with it.
That's what I've been trying to say.
There should be a clear state... There should be a clear statement.
I've been trying to get to.
And the, the data associated with it are reflected in each of the subsequent pages.
Right, thank you. That's, that's what I've been trying to get at, including the sped, special education evaluation, it's in here, it's in the body of this.
So, in other words, everything in parentheses and, and priority two is what you want gone?
All of it.
All of it.
I think all of them.
They want the whole priority gone.
I think they're a part of a goal.
Oh, well, that's what I thought, and I thought, oh, that's what I thought.
I know, I, I was confused too.
That's what, that's what I'm hearing, but when you asked for my opinion, and I say, I like it.
Well, my opinion is it should stay two, but I, but it's a board plan, it's a board priorities. But I would leave it in.
You want, you want high-performing schools?
I think at the last meeting, we brought that up, that we should.
Where is individual, uh, student achievement? So, we, we used to have increased academic achievement of all students. Where in the current proposed priorities, does it say anything about academic achievement of all students?
Yes, and Mr. Jordan, I, that was one of the pieces that, as Ms. Campson knows, that I was pushing hard for. So, um, on priority four, um, where it says increase the on-time graduation, I'm not quite there yet with the wording, but we, we included and educational options and opportunities, which is still not, um, you know, I get, that was one of the areas that we wanted others to chime in on. We have Mr. Jordan, I know, supports that, but, you know, getting beyond SOL, you know, academic achievement overall, how do we, are you okay with including for priority four, increasing academic achievement of all students and on-time graduation, or something? So, so we're, we're incorporating.
I might put that, I might put those words in one.
I, I was, the increased on-time graduation, educational options and opportunities for all students.
Yeah, I think they.
Options for all students?
Yeah.
Does that work?
Yeah.
Or I added it.
Cause I think, does, I mean, I'm sorry, Dr. Boone. Ms. Jordan, does that address your?
Well, I was, for me, I agree with the on-time graduation, everything deal with graduation. To me, student achievement begins from the moment a child walks in our doors, at every level, all the way through graduation. So, to me, school divisions and school boards and governance teams are in the business of student achievement. And so, to me, student achievement ought to, uh, be high and clear, and everything else in here is reflective of student achievement. But.
Yes.
Right now, I don't think we have anything in here that screams student achievement. That's all.
Wow. Well, I disagree with you, I respectfully disagree with you on that. And, so, this is what we've, what this is.
I know, I know we gotta go, but.
We do have to go.
Um, two things, priority three, I al, I'm always concerned when we use a deficit word as the, the lead-in for any type of priority in, indicator. And I understand what we're saying about, we want to, to address achievement gaps. So, once we take the percentages off, we may want to think of another action word as it relates to, rather than decrease.
Close.
Close.
I, 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 I'm not gonna wordsmith it, I'm just offering, you know, and it's for the sake of time, we can certainly offer some more. I do think that on-time graduation is different from educational options and opportunities.
Yes.
Because you graduate on time doesn't necessarily mean that, um, you've been able to take advantage of the variety of programs and, and schools, and specialty programs in schools, or whatever else along the way. And so, ju, just something to think about. I, I just don't see them as, as being equated.
Thinking about separating them.
Yeah, yeah. And I know we're not trying to have a whole lot of priorities, but I, just something to think about.
I think that what I was trying to do here was, um, have goals, have priorities that we can measure, so that we could see if we're actually accomplishing them. We can say increase or decrease achievement gaps, but, you know, how do we know?
I like measurability.
Uh, yeah, I, to me, priorities should be measured. If you can't measure it, then maybe it's not one to have there.
And if we don't get there, we talk about it. But I like to have measurability. So, you all need a direction. This is what we have outlined. We have on February 20th, I have time allocated for, um, uh, the, let's see. Actually. How, how does the board feel right now with the modifications that we've just discussed? Can you send us out the modifications, the revised modifications?
We'll get on the phone and do it together.
Yes.
Well, well, I respectfully would like to ask that we have some time to do this and work with, uh, Dr. Bailey and Mr. Fuddy to, uh, really look at the numbers, look at the format, cause, you know, like I said earlier, I'm also not there yet with it.
We're gonna.
I, I, I'm asking that we have the direction, uh, Dr. Boone has the direction. Um, if we have another, I don't, I don't see the urgency to have it on the agenda for February 20th, cause I would like to have the time to do it right, um, and have it right, um, personally. And I think I see Dr. Bailey shaking her head, cause she wants, they want to be able to review it and review the numbers as well, so.
I can't guarantee that right now. I, we, we've been talking about this plan for a long time. You guys have done a really good job in committee, that's why we gave it to you all. We've got to have some type of direction before, this is not, once we adopt it, doesn't mean that it's carved in.
We don't have direction. That's the part I'm, I mean, Dr. Boone has the direction.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I, Madam Chair, right? If I can, the, um, I think that there's a lot of unreadiness, particularly in the numbers, um, and the percentages of growth and so forth there, and I think that was identified by Ms. Smith. Can we all agree that this is a working document?
Yes.
Okay, I think that we all have consensus around that, that it's a working document. Um, and so, my thing is, is that I think that what the chair has ali, uh, outlined for February 20th, is that we have a sense of direction, this is the tool that we're moving with, but that it really be worded in a way that this is a working document, and that we revisit for final implementation numbers, giving enough time, that we, we identify a time, if it's before the end of the school year, where that may be, so that we have the necessary time, but we've given direction as to what we're working on.
Well, are we agreed on the, that this is where we're going? Because Mr. Jordan did not seem to be there.
Okay, I'm just one vote.
I mean, I'm not there.
Well, yes, but we.
Would you know, would you know?
Well, either way, so, I'm, I'm fine with that, we'll work on that.
Like to get feedback, still from board members.
I think everybody needs to do their homework.
Pick up the phone and call us.
And.
Well, put it in an email, please.
Get in touch with them. About what you, what your suggestions are, because they have worked really hard in getting this together. And, and we do have, um, items that we want to make sure that we accomplish, and this is, this is a big piece of it. This is student achievement, one hundred percent, um, for all of our students. Um, let me just make one other item. So, on the, uh, page two, where we have, uh, at the very top of the page, it says Norfolk School Board, five-year, we can just put five-year accountability plan.
Okay.
Okay?
School Board, School Board Accountability Plan.
You're saying five-year school.
Board Accountability.
It should just be School Board Accountability Plan.
And take improvement out, is what you're saying.
Yeah, I, I agree with Mr. Jordan.
I think that would have saved confusion. I, yeah, I agree.
So, we can just do that.
I agree.
All right.
Already, already, I think we're.
Hey, you know what? You all have done some really good work on this. Um, we need to celebrate it. Um, we are gonna come together on the 20th. This is a good plan, it's got, as Tracy says, it has good bones, right?
So, on the 20th, we would be, we would come, we would, ahead of time, do the, some revisions based on what we've heard. We'll meet with Dr. Bailey and her team, and so that something new will come to them, and the documents that are attached to the agenda, so that they can look through it again.
Yes.
And see if we've tried to address some of the concerns.
All right.
Thank you very much. All right, uh, Mr. Richter.
I'll, I'll ask, um, Mr. Richter and Dr. Bailey, those to come on up, and we won't do a long introduction. I mean, the, the, the board has received, um, the presentations. Where we are tonight is to be able to firm up our recommendations to the board, such that, um, hopefully, the board is ready to, to take some action on the 20th. Um, so with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Richter.
Thank you, Dr. Boone, Dr. Gabriel, members of the board. Um, okay, so I think we're gonna have a PowerPoint up for, for ours really quick. I know that, I'm gonna answer some questions that were asked of us also, to give you some other numbers during the presentation. Um, and I'll do a follow-up with, um, some, just some written documentation for you also, um, that have some other solid things in there for you. Um, so, once again, thank you. Um, tonight, we're gonna be talking about three things. Uh, here we go. Uh, we'll just ask you to advance if that's okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the next slide, um, just talks about the agenda, what the things we're gonna talk about tonight, recommendations for Lake Taylor Middle School, Southside STEM of choice, because that needs to be addressed in here, and then school start times. Um, next one, please. So, the recommendation for the middle school conversion is that we, um, we're going to make the recommendation that Lake Taylor Middle School be converted to a third-through-eight-grade configuration school for the following year, for the 2019 school year. Um, a lot of feedback and, and, um, from both staff and parents about, worried about the school. We, we, we've been sharing the enrollment information, know they're gonna be a little full next year. Um, this gives us some opportunity to have some flexibility with that. Um, it doesn't cause an east and move to Fairview at this point, um, so it doesn't cause any sort of disruption there. Um, we, we feel like this could be, this is gonna provide flexibility. Um, at this point, from the facility planning side, if this is a temporary or a permanent move, becomes an operational move, not a facilities move. Um, we know that the capacity will be there for the school in the future, um, for a pre-K through eight program, if so chosen through a, a curriculum model that works for that school building. Um, but what this is going to allow us to do is a couple of things. Um, we won't have to invest as much into the facility to start. Um, I have met, well, I, I will give you a list of people I've met with since I showed up here yesterday at noon, and it's extensive. Um, Mr. Fuddy has kept me on a busy schedule purposely, because we have met with, um, certainly, Mr. Sutmiller, and because he's, um, associated with this, with Danny Johnson, with, um, Jamie Malinak, with Dr. Gray, um, Robert Klein, Rhonda Ingram, Sharon Birdsong, Dr. Birdsong. I've met with all of these, um, people in the last twenty-four hours to make sure that we're trying to cover all our bases on everything we're talking about. So, I'm gonna reference back to all of those members also. Our conversation with Danny was, um, the focus should be the back of the school at this point, um, making sure that exploratory and special education and music are taken care of for next year, and relighting of the school always. Um, if you walk in the building now, you can, you'll notice that will make a big difference. Some cosmetic things, while, we're also going to recommend that we, um, demolish those portables in the back, um, which will be open for playground space, which is a protected and shaded playground space for children. Um, we believe this is a cost savings, because there are dollars to get associated with those in maintenance, upkeep, and insurance, and we're gonna take that capacity offline, um, because it's not needed at that building. Um, so, some of the implementation of this will include, um, talking about school start time and, and managing that, but we're gonna get to that in a minute. Transportation, uh, we know that there's gonna be some adjustments in that, because, um, we're gonna take the pre-K two, and we're gonna transfer that over to Fair Lawn, and then close Poplar Hall, um, as a facility. Um, so that's gonna require some staffing readjustments, it's going to require, um, moving. Um, we know that one of the questions that was, that was returned to us, a moving cost. Um, it's a tough question, but some of the average costs that you have are about forty-two thousand dollars that you've seen in recent. Um, but, um, I made a call over to Virginia Beach today, because they do this a lot. Um, and a lot of their movement, um, is from permanent to, to swing space, which is, requires about the same move. Um, they do a lot of theirs in-house through their distribution centers, so they use custodian maintenance, and they schedule that. Um, so they do it in-house, which is a cost savings measure. To give you an exact price will be a matter of how much do you want to do in-house versus how much you have to outsource, will be the question to ask. Trying to keep costs minimal and move will be helpful. Um, we will take advantage of not moving necessarily from Fair Lawn over to Lake Taylor, and then Poplar Hall's over there, if we can just move from Poplar Hall's to Lake Taylor, because it's some of the same equipment and same things that get used. So, we can find efficiencies in that move. But we know there are moving costs. Um, I think, um, so with that, then, we have to consider then at Poplar Hall's, the disposition of that facility, um, understanding that when the, the school board abandons that building, then it's taken back to the city. But, the fact of the matter is, is I'm not going to be part of any recommendation that doesn't hold somebody accountable to what that building will do in the future for that community in that neighborhood. Um, we have answered the city, uh, city council's charge of reducing space, and it is not our intent to leave an empty building in that community for blight. And so, there has to be a communicated plan that we stand hand in hand with the city to make sure that that neighborhood is taken care of. Whether the building's used for something else, or if it's a nice green park in the future, um, either way would be great for that community. So, we want to make sure that that is followed through on for this building. Um, so, the other, the other things that go along with this, however, are that we're going to start now the, the feeder pattern change, which Kimberly implemented by doing this through, um, Ingleside, and what's not on here, and I apologize, should be Sherwood Forest and Coleman Place. Um, there are slivers of boundaries that are taking small percentages of kids out of a couple like Sherwood and Coleman Place, that are taking small slivers of kids, five and ten percent of their populations, and taking them to the other school. If you recall your presentation on the facilities master plan, Coleman Place currently feeds four different high schools. Um, in this case, Coleman Place has a very small section of it, which, in this small section, would mean that we would take from four to two high schools by doing just this one move. And frankly, it would move twenty-three fifth graders into the sixth grade, into Norview. So, and I'll get to the big numbers later, but what's gonna happen is that Coleman Place and Sherwood Forest have, literally have, currently, in the boundary we're talking about adjustment, has twenty-three kids in that small section of area, and we'll provide a map for you to show you those areas. Um, Sherwood Forest has ten.
Tell me how that relates to the Lake Taylor.
Okay, because they currently feed into Lake Taylor Middle School.
Middle School.
They do. And so, we're going to clean that feeder up completely. And so, we're gonna have a hundred percent feeder patterns from what is Poplar Hall's Fair Lawn boundary combined, cause that's it. That will be a self-feeder into Lake Taylor Middle. And so, um, and then Coleman Place, and then Sherwood, and then Ingleside will become a one-hundred percent feeder into Norview Middle School. Sherwood Forest, a, that, the small sliver that is split right now, that goes into, um, that goes both into Norview and to, um, Poplar Hall, or into Lake, Lake Taylor, will be now just to Norview. And then Coleman Place, which goes in all different directions, will narrow that scope down while we can in this move. So, here's what it means. This goes to board goals, because I think this is important. We had, we have responded to the Norview Middle School principal on enrollment, because this would be a concern on capacity, and we're starting to move students around. Last year, we had projected, in the feeder pattern change, that the, the live-in would be about thirteen-hundred-and-fifty children. Um, we know that traditionally, because of, um, because of Crossroads and Rosemont, that fit within that boundary, that K-eight boundary, it's kind of a weird one, it's hard to explain. But what happens is that the Norview Middle School actually gets to live-in enrollment for that, because those boundaries exist within the Norview Middle School boundary. So, we actually, in our live-attend analysis, we show those students that live in the Norview boundary, but actually attend somewhere else. And of those, I mean, there's a, a significant amount, thirty-three percent of kids that live in that boundary do not attend Norview Middle School. But, keep in mind that the Crossroads is in that, that K-eight boundary is within that, and Rosemont is actually, influences that a lot. And so, what we see is, is traditionally, the last three years, um, in the Norview feeder pattern, in the Norview Middle School boundary, about thirty percent students do not attend Norview Middle School. It's actually slightly higher than that. It's thirty-one, thirty-two, and thirty-three percent in the last three years do not attend that middle school. We have five percent that come into the building. Last year, it was three percent, it's been six percent and four percent in the previous years. So, we've done some estimates, and then knowing the current projection that Mr. Fuddy has done also, he projected that there would be about nine-hundred-and-forty students in that building next year. We anticipate that on those numbers, the new live-in number with this boundary would be about fourteen-hundred-and-thirty students. Of those, um, thirty percent coming out and seventy-two, two coming in, we estimate the enrollment to be somewhere around a thousand-seventy. The current capacity of the building's thirteen-fifty-two. So, we're not overcrowding the building, and we stay within that. Now, let me get to a board goal of diversity. Um, because of that, fourteen-hundred-and-thirty-one, we did have, we did have thirteen-hundred-and-forty-six. That last year number of six-eight, free and reduced lunch number was seventy-six percent. This new boundary would be seventy-two percent free and reduced lunch count. In Poplar Hall's Fair Lawn, the current six-eight socioeconomic is sixty-three percent free and reduced lunch count. The current second through seventh grade Poplar Hall's Fair Lawn boundary, which is the Lake Taylor, which would be the new, goes to fifty-two-point-six percent. So, we see a reduction, free and reduced, and we balance that. Now, because of the way the boundaries will work and feed through. Now, one of the reasons for this also is that, again, as these, as the population exits, because we still have a couple grades of the Campustella boundary, which does drive the number up, because we know that's a hyper-poverty area. So, we know that that number then, at Campustella then gets isolated, and it's still something we're dealing with. But, in these two instances, again, the middle school, as we said, the. But in these two instances, again, the middle school, as we said three, four, and five years ago, is starting to drive the diversity factor because we're able to change these feeder patterns and align these differently and clean those feeder patterns to allow this to happen. So, we are going to have to have some communication and direct communication with these students, with these schools, and with these parents to make sure that they're very clear that their rising sixth graders of these boundaries are going to go to Norview. Now, we do not intend for the current students at Lake Taylor that will be rising seventh and eighth graders to move out of there and go back to a middle school. We would like for them to finish if they would like to. That way we have continuity. So, we may see some that go over, which would be great, but we anticipate they'd want to stay and finish up. So, in that case, we're going to have about 553 live-in third through eighth graders next year, which still is way under the capacity of Lake Taylor. And we feel like the front of the building, we can hold off on except for lighting the hallways, so we don't have to put money into the front of the building this current year. If there is a plan to move forward, then we can look at those improvements of the front classrooms as we move forward. Yes?
So, and I am in favor of going next year to the three to eight model rather than the K to, as you know, and I talked to you about it, because that was something that I really heard from parents was a concern. The other thing I heard, and I see you have branding, is that will we be keeping in mind that our goal is two years down to move the K2s there? And in anticipation that we answer another parent concern, which was they want the school rebranded. And I know Ms. Bart had, is already looking toward the environmental focus. So will we be using this two years to do what they wanted to do that was like what happened to the, with the Academy for Discovery? There was time to do this before we moved the little kids on in. And when we do move the little kids in, will be part of that being the getting new, the new kind of furniture? I think I've heard $500,000 a building to put furniture in. I think that's what Mr. Smigel told me when I asked him. Would we be making sure that we are really doing those kinds of things so that these parents and children will be getting the same benefits that we put into Academy for Discovery? The time to plan and brand, the time to bring in new furniture that's appropriate in 21st century? I mean, that, that's, that was a big, my concern. Because see, I agree with Dr. Boone when she talks about the pairing, that primary and elementary pairing, which seems so great but hasn't worked out so well. So I certainly want to know that we still have on track to make this the K to eight school that we had hoped for.
Again, what this does is documented right there, and that's why we put in documentation, branding and communication of that branding.
Okay.
We, that's the way we hold it in record to make sure that we're maintaining.
And to get started.
Yes.
And to the other layers of questions that you asked, I think it's important to allow this faculty and leadership to come together and allow them to have voice in the upcoming branding, rather than it be given to them and them not feel like it. So, I would say that, yes, we will be working on a number of things. Not trying to squeeze this in between now and schools opening in September, but rather spend the time, allow that school leadership with support from central administration and others to be able to think about, excuse me, what are some options, what are some pathways? What, what makes sense for that school? And where students could possibly feed into high school, rather than it being imposed upon there. And I do have to correct the thing about the half million dollars in furniture. That's not what we spend even in our new PPEA schools. So I don't, I'm not quite sure how that figure came about, but
As I said, I was.
Those figures include technology and everything else in the brand-new schools that we've had, so.
Even less than I thought so.
It's, it's less than that.
For them to have all new furniture.
And so, just recognizing again, for example, all of our pre-K classrooms receive new furniture this year, so there's no need to repurchase that. Each of the elementary schools have been doing things around tables and things, and so there have been some furniture purchases. We will certainly evaluate and assess what are the needs, what the needs are to contemporize the furniture, particularly at Lake Taylor Middle School. But there are assets at both Poplar Hall's and Fair Lawn that can be repurposed, that are not old furniture. But again, allow that faculty to be the one to come together and say, where do we go from here?
Mr. Director, would you be able to provide those numbers?
I will, yes, yeah, yeah. We were kind of working on it today as we were going through all the, making sure we had it. With one other thing is the, I mean, I think when people ask about, you know, when you see school closure, people immediately want to focus on cost savings. Look, I think that, you know, you could, until you've come to some conclusion about staffing models, those kind of things in the, in the three-eight and doing that, to figure out the appropriate number of cost savings. To me, we're trying to sell this on cost savings, we're not doing it right. And so, there, there's likely some efficiencies and less square footage down the road, and we know that. But we know that there's some incurred costs by just doing what you're doing. And so you might not realize any cost savings to start, and that's okay. The goal is the educational vision and mission of our children.
That is the goal.
And so, so we can provide when there's better ideas on the staffing, administration, all those things that go along with the three-eight model, and those down the road as we solidify those. So we want to make sure that's clear. Yes, sir?
Do you have a quick question?
Yes, sir.
So, no action on the Eastern Pre-K Center, and that was determined?
The reason for that is that we, first of all, we don't have a space for them to go at this current time. We will move the pre-K program that is currently at Poplar Hall's along into the Fair, in the Fair Lawn school. There's plenty of space for that. There are approximately 21 classrooms in that building. We think that, because I don't think we'll need portables at that building either as we get in time, so we'll make sure that. So we're going to try to reduce where we can because we know those are costs, those are, those are kind of hidden costs that nobody talks about. But you pay insurance on those, and you pay to, you pay for electricity in those, and you pay for those things.
Not safe.
Yeah, and they add up.
They're not safe.
Yeah, so they add up. So we're going to look at those things.
They are safe.
However, we do.
We have replaced older, I'm sorry to interrupt.
But you've got to go from that building outside to get to everything you go to inside the main building.
Okay, well, here's the, here's the point.
So, okay, so the point, I think what we're doing is an inventory reduction as much as we can and trying to do that. We also know that, I have, I have talked to Ms. Ingram today regarding costs associated with renovations and improvements. You know, we've identified an estimated cost at the Lake Taylor building. We want to, we want to firm those up. I think Danny and I are a little different on them because, and I want to make sure we're the same on them first. I think that we're going to, I told Ms. Ingram that I think that Fair Lawn probably needs a little TLC money in it. You look out there, you know, the, the playground, the fencing around the playground, the egress to the playground going outside needs improvement. There needs to be, there just needs to be some touch-ups in the interior paint. That, that kind of stuff that makes it more bright and just like a new building walking into. So, I've asked her to look at dollars for that too. So, making sure that we are reasonable with the dollars, knowing that there's needs everywhere. But reducing some cost and time by maybe getting rid of some portables and making our sites cleaner on that. So, I think we're in a good place with it, but I think it's going to take, if, if the board approves this, it's going to take some immediate implementation planning. And when I say immediate, I mean yesterday immediate. So, and we have, when I talk about school start time, we'll talk about a way we can achieve that too.
With what's presented here, does Fair Lawn need any portables?
No.
Okay, good.
This is, this is what I would like to have. I would like to have the numbers that we just talked about. I would like to have a itemized budget for what it will cost for Fair Lawn and for Lake Taylor Middle School. And, and that's going to address the, the music, the PE, the arts, the special education, playground equipment. I would like to have that. I would like.
I'm sorry, do you want moving costs in that?
Yes. Any cost that we are going to be budgeting for, for this, I want to know what that is. The other item, and then Dr. Boone, you can give me your feedback on this, are staffing allocations and implications. If we can get it, kind of get an estimate, if we're going to need new positions, new, your thoughts on the staffing. I'd like to have a, of a understanding about that because, you know, as we do kind of think about this really neat concept of what this school might be, do we want to have a coordinator for that position? So I don't, you know.
So you're too far ahead on that, because until the faculty comes together under the leadership to talk about what would happen pre-K eight for these students, we don't need to plan for coordinators. We need them to come together to gel as a faculty, as a school first, and then give them the space to begin the conversation that we would help facilitate as it relates to what their future destination would look like. And then in a subsequent time, we, later on, maybe the next budget cycle, we'd be talking about, we would have presented, you know, what their thoughts are and what we think financial investments are around that. But that's, that is not needed for what we're doing right now because we cannot pull that off with any integrity, any way of having it valuable between now and September. I wouldn't advise doing that.
But, but you'll have a general staffing, like what that looks like.
Right, you asked me for general staffing thoughts. How many third graders, how many sixth graders and all, how many classrooms and all of that? That's what we will have.
Right, and then the, the specialists and music.
We would have a comprehensive school staffing projection for Fair Lawn and Lake Taylor Middle.
Yes, thank you. Comprehensive, that's a better way to put it.
Gabriel.
Mr. Director.
So if your, if your requests are on behalf of the board, can you also include in that, and is this for, what you're requesting, is this for by the business meeting?
Yes.
Okay. So then if you would consider as well the attendance zone map?
Yes.
The demographic profile of the school and the staff, you can include that in your personnel model. Going back to the accountability plan, we were just talking about number certified teachers and all that. Some of that is right there in that equity policy. And then also the feeder patterns, the things that you've talked about, but if we can get the maps and the data associated with it.
Sure.
And hopefully, if it's possible, at least a week out, so we have an opportunity to review it prior to the board meeting, if that's possible. Yeah, well, I mean, just, some of the stuff I think.
Well, an itemized budget, frankly, I mean, if, an itemized budget would be difficult. And frankly, if the itemized budget is going to change your vote, then if you're not going to vote because the budget stands in the way, I, my recommendation would be don't do the move. Stay where you're at.
But I'm, I can't.
So with that, so I want to be clear that with yours, I can have yours, I can have yours at the end of week. That is fine, yeah. Matt was actually working on this today to make sure we had it, so I just didn't have enough time to get today. That certainly is, the budget would be hard in a week in advance, but we're going to, we'll do our best. Danny's going to, he's going out to make.
That's the answer we need to hear.
That's what we need. Danny's going out, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll be there.
And I just have a comment about the disposition of the building. I had the opportunity to meet with the civic lead earlier this week, and there will be some unintended consequences to some of the very students who currently attend that school. They offer a summer program in that school, it's a camp. But it also feeds the students, some of the people who are students, breakfast, breakfast and lunch. And so with the disposition of that school, they no longer have that location to provide those services that are much needed to the very students who attend our schools. Unfortunately, there's no other school in that area that they can use. But I think we have to show some kind of goodwill in trying to help.
About Poplar Hall's, right?
Yeah.
What if we gave bus service to?
Well.
Same issue with the election board, it's no longer a polling place either.
Right, there are a lot of unintended consequences, but summer feeding is something we can readily address. Again, because the school is moving does not mean necessarily, depending upon any utilization for the school for the fall, that it couldn't be used for summer feeding and something like that. So that's something we'll put on our list, but it, the, the shift to, of that school into Fair Lawn does not necessarily mean that that community wouldn't be served. We do summer feeding sites all over the city, so we'll make note of that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so part of the conversation, part of the ask was about, next slide, please. Was Southside STEM? So, you know, what asked about when thinking about a 30, or 70, 30%. You know, we're looking at attendance rates and knowing that we have in projected enrollment that there are available seats to offer choice without any boundary changes currently. Now, we also know that there is decline in enrollment in the live-in projection over time to the tune of, and I'll provide this to you also. For Campus Stella, our projection, or Southside, Southside STEM, I'm sorry, is currently we have about 970 K8 students that live in that boundary. That is projected to decline 75 to 100 in the next eight years for the live-in. Now, this doesn't mean that there isn't a future opportunity to figure out if there's other boundary scenarios to make this work. However, at this point, there's anticipated in grades K through five, about 25% open seats for choice. So, from a facility's perspective, this becomes an operational and delivery model of choice. And for me, there's enough capacity. I wouldn't suggest, and again, and it's up to you as, as, as the curriculum goes, but to put the kids in a middle school disappointed choice in a STEM program wouldn't be, I mean, you're just putting them to go to another school. The foundations of the STEM and the integrity of the STEM should begin early, and they are starting to begin that. So we do know that. Also know that, we had got some feedback from, from Jackie, I think, yeah. That K5 next year, students who have applied for specialty programs as well as, I'm just reading, she provides some response for us. Ms. Roundtree and I spoke yesterday regarding filling the seats K5 next year with students who have applied for the specialty program, as well as those who are on the waitlist and still may be interested for next year. The deadline for applications for next school year is this week Friday. She will not know the number of students that have applied until after the district specialty program committee reviews the application and notifies her. I will have Ms. Roundtree send the number of students that are currently on the waitlist by grade level, and we'll need to discuss the entry points. That was a response from, from the director.
So we're looking to be able to support as many as possible in, in that choice model.
Camson?
So, for sure, no children that live in that attendance zone would ever be denied a seat for, for space. Because I, as, I recall that that was a really big deal, that that neighborhood wanted all of their children to be able to go to the school. So, this is, this is not going to in any way cause any child that lives in that area to not be able to go to this school.
The current activity in Digstown has caused some of that decline certainly. Again, I can't control what the housing, the city housing's going to do in the future. That's a concern. So, but currently, yes, the seats, I mean, those are there. Those are the numbers, and we project those numbers.
And every child that lives in that attendance zone in that area will always have a seat.
Okay. So the boxes and, oh, sorry.
I just wanted to highlight because what I'm suggesting is through K through five. And there's just highlighting the number of seats that are available by grade level, sorry about that.
Great, Ms. Persine?
So, I have concerns about the board saying that the children that live in that attendance zone will always have a seat. Our goal is to create socio-economically diverse schools. Our goal is to create opportunities and options for our students. And in some cases, that may involve having to transport students to neighborhoods that where the opportunities may be greater. And so, I would not want us to pigeonhole ourselves into saying that we said that we are never going to put any parameters on that. And so I have, I have some concerns about that.
Jordan?
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing, that that's never been on the table.
Right.
And so I don't think, I think we need to be careful about making that statement. Number one, because boundaries change.
Yep.
I, I'm not sure I made that statement to be.
No, you just, you affirmed it.
Yeah, that's okay. We know who made the statement.
Okay. Say a lot of things. Sometimes I retract and you go.
I own the statement.
It's okay.
No, I, I appreciate that.
Have a discussion, everything's fine.
I heard the question is, I heard the question is currently the number. That's what I heard it as, that's why I apologize.
Number one.
But I'm, to your point, I agree with that completely.
If I, if I may, the other, the other piece of it is, is that this is not just about choice seats. This is about choice and. This is about, uh, choice and socioeconomic diversity.
Right.
So I wanna make sure that we're clear, this is not just about choice, it's about choice and economic diversity. So our, uh, if we have a lottery process and so forth, we need to make sure that we are clear and deliberate, uh, about that process.
So can I ask a question then?
Sure.
If, if a child that wants to go to the Southside STEM Academy is, um, not, uh, gonna be able to change the diversity of the school, are you gonna deny them?
Would I personally?
I'm not, it's not our decision, but I mean, is that what, what, is that?
We're gonna receive, we're gonna receive a, I can tell you what we've talked about for the last six years. And for the last six years, we've said that our goal is to have socioeconomic diversity and provide the opportunity for their, to get there through some choice options. So we have talked about for years, uh, means and methods by which you can achieve that. So for me, I would not use the deficit language of denying. What I'm saying is we would encourage, brand promote, and support, uh, opportunities for children to be able to attend schools of their choice that are socio-economically diverse, that aligns with our data, that shows that in Norfolk Public Schools, are more diverse schools on down the line.
I see what you're saying, and I like the encourage, and I like branding, and I like guidance counselor seeking out. But we are gonna have to have that discussion because it's just a different beast with this outside STEM Academy and how it, how it is right now.
To me, it's, it's great too. I, I wanna reiterate something I heard Dr. Boone say earlier. And, and, Mr. Jordan, I know you'll be the first to tout this also. Is that we have made strides in exactly this. St. Helena to Blair to Maury will do that.
Yes.
The ADL, like, ADL's done that. This move for Lake Taylor is going to do that. We are striving and striving and striving. And we're gonna continue to strive for those very goals of Campus Stella and Southside Academy. And we will use the measures of facility planning within our power to do that. Now, currently, and whatever the decision is here, and I know we're on a timeline, whatever the decision is here, is about, it is about selection and prioritization of students who go to what choice programs. That's what it is, and so I agree. It's about diversity, but it's also making sure that we get the right, the right seats and get it balanced. So in the future, will we look at different ideas of boundaries and things? Certainly we will. But I wanna keep reiterating, we are meeting these goals, and we're trying our best to do it. And I would think you'd be, and you are the first to come out and say it too. So this is, this is the start in the right direction. Once we promote the school to get the choice kids in, knowing we have seats, we start the ball rolling. But we have to have the seats first.
Okay.
Early on, we were concerned.
Have that, right.
But now we have the seats.
I'm not sure, I just wanna.
Yes.
Finish responding to my colleague. So we provide opportunities, if, um, if we do an out-of-district transfer.
Okay.
Um, if you are, um, if Rodney Jordan called down to the school board and said, I'd like for a seat for my child at Taylor, and people think I have some influence, they'll work on it, okay? If Rodney Jordan lives in Campus Stella, and Rodney Jordan makes the same request, Rodney Jordan doesn't get the same level, may not get the same level of attention. So every day we make these choices, and we allow for these things to occur. I'm trying to be specific and targeted about what it is that we're trying to do for students at Southside STEM that is based in research and academic achievement for all students. That's where we started with this, so I just was asking the question.
Sure.
Because as history tells me, uh, if we're not clear and specific when it comes to all children, we're not clear and specific when it comes to all children.
Right.
So to the question that Dr. Gabriel asked, and people have asked me many times, yes, I'd be more than willing to go and knock on every single door if that's what it takes to encourage families to take advantage of the great opportunities that we have in Norfolk Public Schools, wherever they are. And I do that every day. So yes, I'd be more than happy to do that.
Ms. Martin.
Um, I just wanna say in response to Mr. Jordan is that, um, and I'm, I'm happy to have this conversation in more detail later time, is that, um, we do have socioeconomic diversity is very important to us, it's a priority. So is equitable access to a quality education. And, um, and, but number one is also academic achievement. So I, I just wanna make, you know, say that I found what you said to, about not allowing access for another child to conflict with the academic achievement and equitable access to, to a quality curriculum. And so I think that when we, as we go down this road, that we need to make sure that we keep, we, we keep those priorities straight because academic achievement has to be number one.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think I've said anything against academic achievement. What I am saying is our data, which we just talked about earlier, clearly shows that where we, the more economically diverse our schools, the greater the academic outcomes are. I think there's a significant amount of data that we can share and research to support that. And I just wanna make sure we are still aligned with those goals.
You have to balance those though. Mm-hmm.
So Tracy, are we about to leave the discussion of the K eight and move on to the start time?
Yeah.
Okay, so right now, just for everyone's, uh, planning, we are set to vote on this issue on February the twentieth. There is gonna be some time allocated in the workshop to go over some burning questions that you might have. But there will be a motion, uh, to move on this project, um, we get, we get the information that we've requested. Uh, but that's for everyone's planning purposes. Please, if you have any other questions, please let them know, um, get the information to us, and that way we can be ready on the twentieth for you all, cause I know that's a, an important date.
And Dr. Gabriel, if I can just stress, because of the substance of what we received today, what the board has received this week for this, as I said, we each take our time and go back and review it carefully, and if you have questions, craft them this week. Because to get questions on Monday or Tuesday, the, the eighteenth or the nineteenth of February, we're gonna be hard pressed to come back wi- with information. Trace has made a commitment, we'll probably get in, in the terms of two data dumps. One being the first set of stuff that he has readily available, the staffing and some of those other pieces will take a little longer for us to, to finalize. And, um, so we'll try to have that early enough so that the board can see that. But please, if you have questions, send them sooner than later because it, you know, once we get into forty-eight hours before the meeting, it's tough for us to come up with great substantive questions that require a lot of substantive responses to get to.
I agree, that's fair to you all.
We can set a deadline?
Yeah, I was gonna, I was just gonna say, can you, you wanna say by Saturday night?
No, Friday.
Friday, okay.
We do get a chance to go home.
Friday, the fifteenth?
Really?
Yeah.
I thought you had a master suite down there.
We eliminated that. What'd you say?
Which Friday?
Um, Friday, the, um.
Fifteenth or the eighth?
Let me see, this Friday is the eighth, next Friday is the fifteenth. Anything you need, we have to have it by the fourteenth or the fifteenth, because once we get into Monday and Tuesday, we're in that forty-eight hour window.
I do have one question. I've looked for it, and I haven't seen it, but it might be in here. Um, what's the proposed start time?
Tracy's gonna, once he gets to that, he's gonna talk about it.
That was my question too.
Yeah, but we're, we're leaving this, but we're leaving this topic, and we're moving to start times, which is gonna be a different vote, okay?
Yes.
All right.
But same question parameters.
Yeah, okay. Fourteenth and fifteenth.
We're gonna talk about start time now.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Thank you.
And it's six o'clock.
Excellent, yeah. Okay, so, um, one of the, one of the reasons that it took till Monday to get this is we got, we shut down results last Tuesday. So we've been trying to crunch numbers as quickly as we could for you. Um, so we launched a survey on January fourteenth, results, um, that, this website's still open. We're still taking feedback, but we closed down the results on the twenty ninth to give you this current snapshot of feedback. Um, we also had community meetings on January twenty-second and twenty-third at Ocean View and Norview. Not big crowds, but very vocal and very productive. Good discussions with these, um, parents and, and staff members. Um, and once again, wanna thank the principals for inviting us to their schools to be able to host this. Next slide please. Um, so I wanna take you through some of the results. Um, you know, first of all, um, almost fifteen hundred responses, which is just awesome for this, for this division, and I'm very happy to see that. Um, the breakdown, as you can see, um, a lot of response from a lot of different sources here. Um, in the other, and you can probably see this in the, in the metadata that you have in a bigger report, in the other, you'll still find teachers, and you'll find staff members, you'll find, um, dieticians, you'll find people that are staff members that probably just didn't know exactly where to put themselves. Um, but again, I wanna tout the hundred and forty student responses. Um, once again, our students are even getting involved now, and we're glad to see that. Please, next one. So the survey results also show that, um, you know, what grade level that we see, and again, we got really good participation from both ends of the spectrum. The middle schools tend to never be always that engaged, but, um, so, and, but those high schools that we saw and the students especially, a lot of high school students, but even some middle school students now contributing. And I think the comments are very clear from each of these groups, um, and they're very, and you can see, even in their writing, um, in their comments where they come from, but I wanted to show you the breakdown of, of what group, what grade levels were being responded to. Next please. Okay, surveys, um, start time satisfaction, as you can see across the board, um, start time satisfaction among the different groups in here. Now, the blue lines actually show the biggest weight. So we wanna tell you kind of in a, in a conditional formatting. So the reason the blue is in there to show you with a quick glance where you saw the, the biggest weight of that. Um, and so when we're looking at, um, you know, the elementary, the middle teacher, the high school teacher, the student, and then breaking it down even further, there seems to be pretty decent satisfaction rates, you know, fifty percent satisfaction rates across the board. Um, and again, if you recall what I said earlier, when it comes to school start time, you're gonna get a third, a third, and a third, and guess what we got? A third, a third, a third. It just kinda breaks down almost like that, um, when you look at each specific one. Um, and you see that as a satisfied and dissatisfied, but the student satisfaction rate actually starts to go down some, especially the high school. And you see it, and you see it in their comments also. Um, and what was interesting about comments also is that there was a lot of reflective high school teacher and, and high school student voice in the same, um, which I thought was an interesting kind of reflection of this. Um, so that gives you some of the, the satisfaction surveys in there. Next one please. Um, bus ride time, now bus ride time, again, we didn't find a lot of dissatisfaction with bus ride time um, until you got to the, the higher grades it starts to get. Now, what I think, what, what might have been an interesting question to ask is about transportation service. Because I will, and Mr. Kleiman, I talked about this today. When we asked the question in the community meetings about anybody who has a late bus or a bus didn't show up or something like that, everybody raised their hand. And we know that because of the current stagger system doesn't allow for a hundred percent customer satisfaction. Um, there's a lot of restrictions in the way because of the current stagger system. Um, and regardless of who's in charge of it or who runs it or anything, if you're in this current stagger system, it will always be this way. There is no way unless we can increase our bus fleet to a lot more with a lot more staff. Um, and that's just not, that's not probable in this case. But we see a pretty good satisfaction rate with bus ride times. Um, now of this, I want you to note that there were seventy-two student responses and two hundred and seventy-one of the fifteen hundred that responded to this, because I think that's important, of those who rode a bus, um, answered this question. Next please. Agreement level to benefits of health and safety. Now, this is where we started to see a lot of increase of, um, that kinda disagrees with, or kind of, I don't know if disagrees with, but it doesn't agree necessarily right up to the satisfaction rates. Because what you see is that most people agree that there are substantial benefits to health, safety and well-being. And we get even to some percentages in the sixties and close to seventy percent, um, of agreement when it comes to this. Um, they, you know, and the ability to see data and to know the research that's out there is what it is. Um, people may not agree with the research, and that's their prerogative, and you can see that there are people that strongly agree with that research. And so it is from each, each group. But again, I look at that middle and high school parent because that's the biggest impact right now that we're talking about. Next please. Um, benefits of academic performance, and once again, we start to see some pretty significant, um, increases in agreement levels to the satisfaction rates. Um, and so, um, again, this, I think that this is a matter of there's, there's some behavior changes that have to occur because of this. I don't think it's solely dependent on school start time. Um, and so, and I think the, and I think the research says that too. I think there is other supporting evidence, but this is one, um, one factor that can increase this. So you can see those satisfaction rates. Next please. Important factors. Now, what we did here was I tried to put them in order of rank on their average. Um, and you can see that ranking importance factors, when you get into the report, I wanna, I wanna be clear, that we actually even broke it down to each respondent group, and we ordered it in each respondent group. So you can go into the, again, the metadata and see kind of by, like, what the high school students thought in order rank, and what the parents thought in order rank. But overall, I wanted to show you the overall, academic performance, health sleep, and then adult work schedule. Or, in this one, you can see that those three rank closest to the highest priorities. Um, and as you get through this, um, you know, I know that, you know, before and after school care, with, you know, fifty percent of our respondents being elementary, that may skew it a little bit because, you know, middle and high school may not be as concerned with after-school daycare all the time because of the activity level. And so you may see that a little bit. Um, but then you get down, and students' work schedule, even among the, the different groups, seem to fall to the last. Um, knowing that's important to some people. What we were very clear on in our community meetings is that there is always an anecdotal something to disagree with. And we know that. We know that there's parents out there who have high school kids that take care. We know that, um, there are a thousand different, but we also know anecdotally it goes the other way. Every, it seems like every elementary parent that showed up said, we like the early start time because we find ourselves with a child that wakes up so early that we're entertaining him for two hours before they have to get on the bus to go to school, or work schedule. I had one parent specifically said that I had to quit my job because school starts so late, and I don't have the daycare to take care of my one child, she's a single parent. And, and she said, anecdotally, I know that that's one case, but an earlier start time would allow me more options to find employment. And so there's just, there's always gonna be anecdotal things out there, we know that. And so we have to go back to what kind of the research shows us. Um, and so, you know, we lean on this response to make sure that if the implementation goes forward, that these are the things we need to prioritize. We need to prioritize these factors to make sure that the satisfaction rates of our respondents increase. And that's the goal of this question, is to make sure that we're addressing the concerns. I had a very astute community member say, it sounds like this decision's been made, the questions are asking about implementation. I said, well, I'm gonna tell you, there's a lot of support for this, and we are trying to ask the questions that would help us make a better decision once we implement. And so I think there's some, there's some truth in that, I never wanna hide that. But this question was directly related to, if we implement, what should we be paying attention to? And so we can see those numbers. Next one please. Um, approval rating of changing start dismissal to three staggers. Um, now this got, um, significant, um, approval ratings, and I think that people know that what those four staggers mean. I don't think it's a secret out there. Um, they see the benefits of a three-stagger system. Um, I'm afraid that some of the discussion, and, and I think again, our first group at Ocean, um, Ocean View.
Ocean View.
Um, was, um, it's, it said, it sounds like, uh, transportation's a big factor in this. And I said, look, I don't wanna take away from the benefits of this, but transportation definitely has an influence on this, and there's no question it does. Um, significant influence, because I believe when buses don't show up on time, or they deliver students late to school, or they don't get to an activity on time or something like that, that affects school performance. So transportation is a direct correlation to school performance, and I believe that, and there's nobody can convince me any differently. So if we can clean that up, we can have better results. And so, and I think people agree that that four stagger is not the system to be in. Next please. Some of the comments out there, these are common themes, and again, what we do, and you're gonna see in this, is we try to group common themes. Now, there are some things I, I kept in here because I think that there's things that are disproved. High schoolers will just stay up later with later start time. You've seen research that that is not true. The research says that that is not true. Um, that it doesn't vary, it's the wake-up time that varies. Um, so also, I think one of the biggest things that we saw was that, um, and first of all, I wanna compliment the community. This is an assertive day that felt like people were taking shots. It really felt constructive. When you read through comments, it feels constructive to us. And I think elementary parents could be good with it, they're not really comfortable with seven-thirty. That is the, that's kind of the prevailing thought on this. Now, I'm gonna talk about variations in start time to help alleviate some of that. Um, and so, um, obviously there's concern for extracurriculars and all that. Um, we've had extensive meetings with, um, with Mr. Suttmiller regarding athletics, after-school activities like that. Um, his message to us is the athletic directors will make the adaptations to make it work. His message to us is the athletic directors will make the adaptations to make it work. And we, they will support. They also want to understand, they want everybody to understand that it's not just about lights on fields. It is really about after-school study tables, food service to those athletes, that are a critical component of after-school activities and, and groups and athletics. And we want to pay attention to that. So I think that you see, those are kind of the prevailing. But what you're also going to see is that there's about 70 pages of comments that you can peruse through anytime you want. Very good, though. So next one. So the school's start time recommendation. The recommendation, I believe, should be to implement change in start dismissal times. Move elementaries to the first time generally, there may be, we'll, we'll talk about that in a minute, and high schools to the last start time. There are, now, what I am not recommending at this point, unless we want to talk through this, is when you should implement, because I think there are factors that are included in this. One of the reasons that I have met with so many groups in the last two weeks is to determine whether or not this can be implemented in the 1920 year, or would you have to wait? Let me start with some, let me start with some alternative start times for you.
Okay.
And again, we, this was a big discussion with Mr. Kleimbell today, so I don't have, and I'll get this to you in documentation. You can't, the, the issue is you can't move elementary so far back with high schools being impacted by it and after school. To make the staggers work, you need a certain amount of minutes in there, somewhere between a 35 and 45-minute timeline. 45 is ideal, but we can make 40 work. And so there are two alternatives. If the 7:30 start time is, which was the one that's been kind of out there, the start dismissal for elementary would look like 7:30, 1:55. Middle school would be 8:05 to 2:35. And we could get the high school start time to 8:50, dismiss at 3:30, which means that 4 o'clock kind of disappears. A 4 o'clock start time kind of also sets some anxiety at high school start time. But with a 7:30 start time for elementary, we could, we can push that back 10 minutes to make that work. Now, flip it. We can make it so elementary could start, and I believe it's a range. I don't, I think generally it'd be a 7:40 start time, which would be a 7:40, 2:05.
Hold on a second.
Yeah.
You're, you're giving us a second option now?
Second option.
Okay, and we're still talking elementary school?
This is elementary school. So your second option is 7:40 instead of 7:30. Dismissal 2:05. Which would then, would make these, middle school start time not change from its current, 8:15. Now, this would include K8s and 3/8s. Dismissal 2:45. And then a high school.
You said 8:15, 2:45.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And then a high school, we would have to be at that 9 o'clock, at 3:45. Now, again, we believe that there's some ranges in there. What we talked about with Mr. Kleimbell today was, okay, is there possibilities where we can blend short elementary routes with long middle school routes to adjust some times? Chesapeake currently has varied times at their elementary schools based on some of those transportation factors. So we can push some elementaries back by with shorter middle school times, or vice versa. We can do the longer elementary routes with shorter middle school routes. So we can get some variations in there. We haven't run scenarios because you can run 1,000 of these scenarios and just keep grinding wheels. But generally, those are the start times we would talk about. Now, there are other things that can be done to give you some flexibility. First thing, you could combine shared services of elementary and middle school students to schools that it makes sense. So currently, at four schools, you transport elementary kids with middle school kids. But there are instances, and you are, you are currently going to make an instance of, and then we're trying to work around one, where there is benefits to combining those. So Sewell's Point and Blair, there's issues with going up to the base, coming back from the base, going up to the base, and coming back to the base. Can't do it in the afternoon. The Sewell's Point bus, that Sewell's Point, there's, there's one that's 45 minutes. You might as well just make it 45 minutes late, because that's what it is. One of the workarounds is that you put both students on the bus, and you make one trip into the base for K through 8 students, and then you make the transport. But it's only acceptable if it's acceptable to put K through 8 students on the same bus. There are other instances across the district, Calcutta and Northside. There are adjacent properties, Norview Middle and Norview Elementary School. They are very close to each other. There are instances where we find efficiencies by being able to combine shared services, and which would provide flexible start times for schools to allow us to adjust some of those, if that was an acceptable measure to do that. Other things to consider, special education placement, pre-K placement, citywide programs and how they best are best suited in this plan. Those also offer better arrangements. Now, I think that those are adjustments over time. We have been working very closely with pre-K to assure, and then, you know, especially we're dealing with like Easton, Madison, Berkeley, Willoughby. We're working very closely on pre-K placement to make sure we're making more efficient bus routes to make it more flexible. Those sit on weird staggers because of that. But we also need to consider citywide programs because we're peeling every onion. We've got to consider, you know, technical center. If we're going to push back start time for high schools, what are we going to do about technical center transportation and shuttles from the high schools if they don't switch start, start times? So we got, we have to consider all of those things in there. But with these things, we can always provide more flexibility. But things that have kind of, but instances, and we know those instances out there. So one of the original thoughts on K8, K8 schools was no athletics. When we added athletics to K8 schools and they had to be transported, that had a direct impact on service providing in transportation, because you add buses to transport kids to make sure they have their athletic programs. Not a bad decision from a practice, practice standpoint, but it has a consequence when it comes to transportation. So we need to just make sure that we're always considering the requests that we're making and basing on good data. So we have the ability to make those adjustments. But right now, those are the two alternatives I think we could make for start times. Things that may be implementation, and this is very important, and I think this is why there's no recommendation on when you should do this yet, because I think that there are different, there are different things to consider. Transportation, I believe, can be implemented. I think that, given that we've been working on this in transportation for a while, thinking about this, we think we can make it work. Wraparound services, I went with Dr. Birdsong today. The wraparound services, which include before and after school daycare, those kind of things. MOUs, memorandum of the agreements, the joint use agreements with city rec centers, Champions program, YMCA, YWCA's out there. Those all have to be considered in this conversation. Now, it's a conversation about, now, there's only two schools, elementary schools, that don't provide that because right now there's, there hasn't been requested need. And I was, when I saw, I'm, I'm fascinated by that data. But here's the thing, is that we're going to, we're going to be infringing on operational time and staffing time for those after and day, before school daycare providers. So if our elementary kids are going to be there an hour longer, what are we going to do in our agreements? And how do we communicate that? But as Dr. Birdsong pointed out, because that's why we ask everybody, she goes, "Well, don't you think they won't be there as long in the morning? Because we got an earlier start time." So we're not sure the hours of service change a whole lot, but we think the adjustment of the service changes. And so, so again, someone thinking about all the angles, and I appreciate that, that feedback, because that makes sense to us. Now, that might be attractive for daycare providers, because maybe then their employees can take another job in the morning instead of splitting their shifts or doing stuff like that. So, but the idea is that we need to have a communications plan, we need to meet, we need to put it in place, and make sure that everybody's on board with it, which includes, again, champions, YMCA's, rec centers, all of those sitting at the table to do it. It demands a strong communications plan and a strong implementation plan to get that done. So those wraparound services. Athletics, field lighting, we're not going to get to. Now, I want to make very clear on something, that there's been some discussion about, and somehow a connection was made between saving dollars for a school to get to lighting at high schools, like popular. There's, I'm going to, as I've said several times, there is no money in the budget for lighting at schools right now. But we're hearing some rumor of some people making that connection. Well, you're saving money there, I guess the lights are going to go in because of that. No connection. We have said all along, there is no money in the budget for lighting at athletic fields right now. Okay? Now, we have had, we've got quotes. Mr. Suttmiller again went out. We have verified those quotes. I've talked to, again, because you've got a neighboring district doing the same thing, the numbers are spot on. We're not, I mean, they were spot on for it. You know, the, the number's going to range, it's between $2 and $3 million for full implement, implementation over time to do this. But they require baseball and softball fields, and I think those are the, the competition fields, and then a lot of practice fields for after-school programs. Danny is continuing to look at alternative measures of temporary lighting, mobile lighting, to accommodate that in the interim, and to see if that can work. So we know that that is one thing that we have to talk about. But I think it's working very closely with the athletic department, coaches, to think about different ideas about how we provide after-school services for athletes that doesn't jeopardize the service we currently do. And so we need to be thinking about our communications plan with athletics. Because, again, I, I'm going to tell you that my experience tells me coaches aren't for later start time. They're, they're, they got a little pushback. But you know what? That's their world, and they're trying to service their athletes and give them the best experience possible. This is an important discussion. And this doesn't just include athletes, this is bands. This is after-school activities that kids are traveling to, that they're in competition. All of those things, because other schools have to adapt to that also. The good news is you've got three school districts that are going to be in that kind of world soon.
So then let me just narrow our focus down. Your, your clear recommendation is to implement the change of the start and the dismissal time.
Yes.
But you are not giving us a directive as to when we should do it, being that we have to consider all of these options.
That's correct. I can give you two options for it.
Well, you have the, the options for the start times, but you're not giving us a hard and steady date for when it needs to be implemented per the school year.
Right, because of looking at what it takes to...
Right, exactly.
But I would say, if I could, I'm sorry. I think it would be important to think about a decision so that we can use the time to get this ready for whenever it is. So whether it's 1920, whether it's 2021, the idea is that the board would take action early enough that the work could begin, and not push it off to, if, if the board is thinking, "Well, we might not do it to 2021," don't wait to the fall to make that decision. We need now to plan and, and do all the legwork. So that's what I wanted to share with you.
Yeah, thanks, Dr. Boone, because that's where I would like for the board to be as well. I would like for us to be able to give the administration, Dr. Boone, a clear directive for where we want to see the start times, but not, not direct them on the time of when it is going to start. Because I think, I mean, just based on what you've told us tonight, there is a lot, there are a lot of questions and some topics that we have to get a little bit more information on to feel comfortable about the start time. Definitely preparation on the administrative end of it. So I would like to have the board take action on the 20th on the start times, just to say that we would like to, to move on it. But, Dr. Boone, would you like to, with what you all have discussed so far, say that not the 18, 19 school year, but to begin the planning discussion so that it can be implemented in the following year?
When we started this process, I was all ready to go for 1920.
Me too.
I felt we could pull it off.
Not me.
But this, this is why, you know, again, we brought in the services of Tracy Richter and Cooperative Strategies to help us think through what the project management piece of this is. And he and I have talked about that, and I'm, I think that the board should engage Tracy as part of the project management work in terms of doing this. It's his expertise, he can help us navigate this. And because he knows the work, it's not about trying to hire somebody to do the work assigned to somebody else in addition to, but then we can support the project management. So I, I think that's the way to go. Frankly, I'm, I'm at a point, now, I hadn't planned to say this tonight, but I guess I'm there now. I would think the 2021 school year to allow us all of the legwork, what would they vote this month, that would allow us to start the charge so that we can go forward. Like you said, I was, was all in, but there are some things, and budgetarily, we, we're deep into, to the planning. I haven't seen anything that's a, a real stress on the budget outside of the lighting for the fields. But again, this gives us a chance to, to look at how we accomplish that. But I don't think there's anything in what we have to accomplish that would derail us taking a vote, the board taking a vote, to move this forward for the 2021, 21 school year for implementation.
I favor that. That was what my question was going to be, because I think it's too rushed. So, thank you, Dr. Boone. That's exactly where I am, 2021 school year.
But I'm all in. I want the board to understand, early on, you know, there may have been any questions. I'm all in on changing the school's start time, but I think you all know me well enough. I don't like doing things halfway. And so the, so Mr. Clayton is gone, because he talked about process early. But if you don't spend enough time with the process, the outcome is raggedy, so.
Ms. Paseen?
So what I, what I'm hearing is that it is not feasible to change the start time for next school year.
I'm not saying it's not feasible. I'm saying it's a lot to accomplish in a short amount of time to, to make that happen. And so, you know, even when I've worked with Suttmiller, we got to notify our schools we, we compete with and all that. And so, yes, Chesapeake has been on the, the change start, start time and all that. But I think logistic, I think the biggest piece is understanding, another big piece is understanding what the before and after care, after-school care would be, and doing that well, because as, as Mr. Richter indicated, the various providers that we currently have. But one of the things I heard very clearly in the public comment and at the, one of the community forums, and when you read the comments, is what's affordable. And I don't know if we can get to the conversation of affordability and do that well, and be able to really offer something to parents that says, "Okay, we can do this." So, like you said, back in the fall, I'm ready to go. I thought we could pull it off. But there are a lot of details. And that's why when you listen to the community voice on this, I'm, I'm, I'm at that place now of moving forward, but using the next eight months or so to get the planning in place so everybody can understand what it is, the communication, build those systems, those support, next eight, 10 months, and then we can go forward.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that, Dr. Boone. That's, that's where I am. I think that we are going to declare our commitment to what the data and the research shows, but we are also going to declare that we are going to think this process through and think about the children and families and the staff members that are going to be affected by this decision and, and do it right versus doing it just to check the box, so.
So I, I just want to be clear. We are going to vote on February 20th on changing the start time. It's just with an implementation of 2021? Okay, we're not delaying that, okay.
Oh, that's crystal clear.
Well, the clarification, will the, the implementation include making a final decision on start time and finish time?
That was my question too.
Sorry about that.
That was mine too.
Well, are we making that decision tonight?
So, just, just so you know, because I've been asking, I've been trying to ask other districts about kind of their implementation also. I know one of the discussions, I had a, I had a real lengthy conversation today with Virginia Beach again, and because I know they're going through, but I've talked to another district too. Part of their process, because one of my direct questions was, have you guys determined a start time?
Yeah.
Because it might be, I mean, looking at consistency in the region might be a good idea.
Yeah.
They have not. It's part of their implementation strategy.
I think that's where we need to be. I don't want us to give the division a hard and fast time, because my, one of my questions is, I would like to know, how early are children going to be at a bus stop, for example?
Right.
You know, with this different scenarios. But what this vote will do is it will, you know, assuming that it passes, you know, I don't have a crystal ball, but it'll at least have the commitment to moving in this direction, and then we'll have a timeline. I mean, we'll have a deadline as to when we need to do it. And then it is up to us to make sure that we get the information from you all on this, so that the administration can implement it. So I'm not going to push us to declare whether we do option A or B. I'm just going to have us say that we are going to commit to the later start times.
And we may have another option later.
Yeah, changing.
We may have, yeah, we may have different start time options once Tracy's finished.
Yeah, and that'll be the motion.
Like I said, I think we are pretty much in that range, though, thinking about, one, the commitments not to have any children on buses before 7:00 a.m. That's not the answer to your questions, Dr. Gabriel, but not having any children on buses before 7:00 a.m. And then being able to have at least that 45-minute period. And then, being able to have at least that forty-five minute period of time between staggers, so that the runs can be efficient. And so, so we are somewhere in this range, and trying to be responsive to the feedback that, that we've received, but yet, not make it impossible for our drivers to get it done well.
One last question.
But as you explore other options, see, seven o'clock for elementary kids to get out there, it's dark in December at seven o'clock. I'm still have a little concern, so we, we won't just be locked into these two options. We'll have the opportunity to explore more, because I am a little concerned about the bus time for elementary children.
Do you mind? So, I'll just share this, because I, I did share this with Noel, because I, I work out at five-thirty in the morning, and on my way home, it's six-thirty, and the bus is picking up high schoolers. And I just imagined, when we implement this, they're going to be elementary schoolers out there at six-thirty?
No.
And I just don't want to see that.
That's never been the intent.
No, that's, that's why no one on a bus before seven was a key, because we have, like you said, we have high schools on the bus before six.
That's worth repeating, because I know parents are scared.
Keep in mind, keep in mind, most, most bus rides, and I want to keep iterating.
That's where your communication plan comes in.
Most bus rides are fifteen to twenty minutes in elementary, that's maximum.
Because they are neighborhood schools, so you think about what they're serving. So they are not going to greater distances. When you get to middle and high schools, the distances increase, because we don't have thirty-some element, uh, middle and high schools like we have thirty-some elementary schools. And so that's where the bus rides are lengthened. But again, so we can manage the routes quicker.
All right, well, I know that you have a plane to catch.
So, last thing, I just want to be sure, just really quickly, that we will try to make adjustments. We talked to Mr. Kleinfeld. This, to push it back a year puts a stress on transportation, and we all know that. To stay on a forced stagger for one more year. We'll have to be very clear in communication, but Mr. Kleinfeld and I have, we've, and Dennis have talked about working solutions as much as we can to make adjustments when we can, to try to make a better service model. But we know it's not going to be perfect for another year. That's just one concern.
Right, but we will do as much adjustment and cleanup as we can to, to try to improve those. You know, we, I'd even thought about, you know, can we go to three staggers, even though they don't represent the school change start time? But yeah, you see, Mr. Richter is still reminding me, the answer's still no, so.
And it's that, and it's that darn second stagger. We keep trying to make adjustments, he goes, "No more in second stagger."
Okay, got it.
But, Dr. Gabriel, I was going to, as part of the motion crafting, is there some way we can craft it so that if it is approved, that it, they were actually saying that the implementation of it starts immediately, even though we know it's planning, with the idea that the actual change is occurring in a particular point in time? Because we will have board changeover, elections and all that, and I don't want us to be in a scenario where we find that we put the administration on the work or something, and then it gets subject to another vote.
I hear what you're saying, and, and I do want that to be very clear, that when we do word the motion, that it is that we are on a path to change the start times, and that the timeframe is going to be, you know, we'll give it the start, the year of twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one. And then if we need to adjust that part based on the information during the planning process, that we can do it. But the commitment will be to moving on the change of the start times.
And I jotted down that statement about working on the wording for the motion, so that we can...
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll work on that.
And, and to piggyback on that, is it possible to, is it feasible to word it in such a way that we, just as we did with the resolution, say that the implementation strategy will be developed by December twenty-nineteen? I mean, is that, does that seem like a...
I'll jot that down, and as we start working on it, we...
Let's work on it, yeah.
We can get the senior team to begin to work on it with Tracy, and then offer a suggestion.
Yep, and, and Carlos is really good at crafting motions as well, so. Okay, so, thank you very much, have a safe flight back, we appreciate it. And, and on this topic as well, if there are questions that you have, the February fourteen-fifteen deadline applies to this one as well. So, we'll get that information to you. Thank you. We were set to cover some policy items, however, it is six-thirty, and I do want to stay committed to our end time. Yeah, so, are there any burning questions that folks have on the three policies that we were going to be discussing tonight? There was actually two. Service animals, it was basically regulations for that, and then the other policy. Because we can, we can discuss this at our business meeting, during the end of the business meeting when we're, when we're taking votes, we can have a discussion. But if there are no burning questions, then I would say that we move it.
Just to make sure I'm clear, is the plan to vote on this at the next business meeting?
Yes.
Uh, yes.
In the consent agenda.
In the consent agenda.
So then on the, so I, I can share with you now, and I can follow up with email there, but on the policy dealing with student suspension expulsion?
Okay.
Uh, there were three areas I had question or comment. One, in the under administrative hearing section C. It has language that makes it sound like we're in a court of law about materials and facts and evidence, and I think it's very legalese. So that's under administrative hearing section C. Also, in our policy, it says division rep. And I like for us to consider whether or not, right now, the division rep tends to be an attorney. And I like to, no, no other divisions allow for principals to come and, um, appear before the hearings, since oftentimes they're the ones that are involved with the issue in the beginning. So I'd like for us to look at division rep versus staff versus principal, or somehow, see if that can be encompassing. And then the last thing is, there's a section eight that deals with drug offenses. Our current policy says that under certain circumstances, a child shall be expelled. So, I know operationally, we tend to distinguish between possession versus distribution amounts, because it does have language to modify that. But in other school division policies, it says may expelled. So I'd just like for us to give some consideration, whether or not this is an opportunity to change our shall expel to a may expel.
Could I just piggyback on the second one that Mr. Jordan brought up? That's another responsibility you're putting on principals, more time out of their building. So just if we could also keep that in mind, and maybe get some feedback from Sban and, and the high school one, because you're pulling them out of school.
I'm not requiring it, and it typically would have hearings later. I'm just saying right now, the, the way the policy reads, it just says division rep. And what I was trying to do was to see if we wanted to provide the opportunity for others besides the attorney to be able to come and present the case.
As long as we don't get in a slide that slides in and makes it mandatory?
Yeah, nope.
Okay.
All right, very good, thank you. So, we'll have these, these policies on the consent agenda, and if we can have some discussion on it, so that Mr. Jordan, we can get these questions, go back to you guys, and then, I guess, send us any feedback. We can pull it from the consent agenda and then vote on it separately, that way we have discussion on it, and...
Did we have a few minutes in the workshop?
Mr. Jordan, could you email something?
Yes.
We never have to.
I'll email it.
But we can try to.
I'll email the phone.
Yeah, the, the policy committee meeting's on February fifteenth, so, you know, I'd like for us to be able to review it before...
I'm sorry, I was...
Our, our policy committee meeting's on February fifteenth, so...
I can, I can send it to you tomorrow.
Yeah, okay.
And then the other, I mentioned at the last meeting about, uh, how Virginia Beach has a cooperative agreement dealing with legal services.
Right.
And I brought that up, so I said I would provide board members with copy of that agreement, so I just want to pass those out for future consideration. Nah, electronic, man. And there's another one I'll email you, because I didn't, that's related to that.
All right, very good, okay. All right, then our meeting is adjourned.